Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Board of, Newton County Board of Commissioners meeting Tuesday, August 20th. At this time, before we get started, I'd like to ask Commissioner Henderson if he would lead us in our invocation, please.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. It is, as most of you know, I brought my Bible today, you know, and typically, I would be going, if it wasn't a commission in the evening, I'd be trying to catch a revival somewhere in the community in Newton County, so that I could attend and praise my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. And Mr. Chairman, I'm just gonna add one other thing before I go into the prayer. You know, I've been a deacon for going on thirty-plus years, and since I've been on the board, I've been called everything but a deacon, but today, I'm just, I'm proud to be a deacon, and proud that, uh, that I was asked to do the prayer. We went by the heads. Dear Father, once again, we come with thanksgiving in our hearts, we come just to say, "Thank you." Thank you for being God, and being God all by yourself. We know that, my Father, that you are a good God, one whom sits up high and look down low, and you know what our needs are. And we ask you, Father, to come in and, and just lead us and guide us in the way that you would have us go, so that we can forever praise you in your holy name, this we pray, in our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ's name, amen.
Thank you, Commissioner Henderson, Commissioner Mason will lead us in our pledge now.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Mason. Before we get started, um, I would like to have everyone take just a few seconds, and let's silence our cellphones, myself included. Thank you. With, with that, we've got, uh, we've got quite an agenda tonight, so, uh, the board would appreciate anything that anyone could do to, to make this meeting more efficient, okay? So, let's try to use our time wisely and keep this moving, moving as best we can. Thank you. Uh, at this time, before we try to, before we adopt the agenda, I'd like to make a couple of changes. I will be adding, after, after item five, citizen comments, I will be adding item five A, that's the Vice Chair's report, and I'll, from the consent agenda, we'll, we'll be moving item eight B, making it item nine A. We will be moving item eight D and making it item nine B. With that, I seek a motion to approve the, the agenda, please.
Some move, second.
Motion, second, Commissioner Henderson, second. Any discussion?
Commissioner, are you gonna combine some of those?
We are, we are going to combine, my mistake, thank you, Commissioner Cowan. We will be combining also, uh, let's see, that would be items twelve, thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen into one item. Uh, we'll be making that item, item twelve. My apologies, thank you, Commissioner Cowan. With that, I seek a new motion to approve.
Some move, second.
Any more discussion? All in favor? All against? Pass is five-zero. Thank you. With that, we come up to citizen comments. Uh, these citizen comments were for agenda topics only, you have three minutes, if I'm not mistaken. Uh, the, the overhead is not working, so you will not be able to see your time, you'll have to work, look to your right, to the screen, uh, to the right of the podium, to understand how much time you have left. State your name and address for the record.
Uh, my name is Al Green, I live at fifty-five Route George.
Can you come on, come on up here, I'm sorry. Yep, yep, yep. You are now authorized.
My name is Al Green, I live at fifty-five Route George, I wanna talk about number eleven. I don't think we should be using any taxpayer dollars to offend anybody who's under indictment. You can take that money, get it to the N M S, or give it to Sheriff E- Ezra Brown, so he can get some more help over there. I appreciate you, thank you.
Thank you.
Name is Dave Norton, four-three-five-seven, Highway one forty-two in Newborn. Uh, first off, I'd like to say thank you to everyone that's up here behind the podium, and the people on the sides, on the sidelines and the background, making it all work. Uh, on item number eleven, uh, every man has his day in court, he is due that. Uh, on items concerning the moratorium, I don't remember the number, I would like to see that include commercial also. I know we don't need to stifle someone that wants to open a business, but we need to address issues all at one time, not part now, part later, uh, and it is just temporary, so, and it doesn't affect someone just getting a permit for an area that's already zoned, so I would like to see it also include commercial and industrial in the moratorium for that reason. It's just temporary, a year from now, we can lift the moratorium and, and move on, hopefully in a better direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? State your name and address for the record, please.
Cindy Barton, thirty-five, Campbellton Trace, um, want to address number eleven. I feel like if you've done the crime, then you need to pay the dime. Um, citizens in this county shouldn't have to pay a defense fund for something that he committed. Um, I feel like none of us received any of that hundred thousand dollars that he got for his house, so I don't feel like we need to pay for his defense fund. I also, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, any committee that he's on, I don't think he needs to be on it, I think he needs to be removed. Um, that's just what I feel. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hey, good evening, my name is Ryan Ralston, I live here in Newton County at one oh five Orchard Lane. I'm a lifelong resident of Newton County, the only time I wasn't, uh, living in the county is when I was on active duty in the military for six years. I'm here to speak on, um, item number eleven. I'm a firm believer that everyone, um, including Chairman Baines, um, is innocent until proven guilty. I've dedicated the past ten years of my life, um, fighting to free the innocent incarcerated, I work for a nonprofit that does just that. With that said, however, um, I stand in opposition of any more of my tax dollars, or any tax dollars for that matter, um, going to fund his legal defense. If he's now claiming to be indigent, which I don't know if he is, he can go down to the public defender's office and, and apply for an attorney. Um, that's all I have to say about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Susan Jackson, I live at one-ten Wisteria Boulevard. Ladies and gentlemen, I stand before you today as a deeply concerned citizen of Newton County, I am appalled at the situation we find ourselves in. Our chairman, Marcelo Baines, has been indicted for criminal activities that have stolen from the very people he was elected to serve, and now, instead of holding him accountable for his actions, we are being asked to foot the bill for his legal defense, using our hard-earned tax dollars. This is an outrage, and I will not be silent. This is not just a matter of mismanagement, this is a betrayal of trust. Chairman Baines has run this county into the ground. He has shown blatant disregard for the needs of this community, making decisions that benefit his own interests while neglecting his duties to the citizens. District three in particular has suffered because of his personal vendetta against those who dared to question him. How can we allow a man who has no disregard, has no regard for professional decorum or the well-being of our community, continue to drain our resources? Marcelo Baines need to be removed from all boards immediately, his leadership has been nothing but detrimental to the health of this county. No one who is indicted for criminal activities should remain in a position of power, making decisions that impact our lives and futures. We need leadership that prioritizes the citizens, not someone who has abused their position for personal gain. Let me be clear, there's no justification for using taxpayer money to cover the legal expenses of someone who has committed crimes against the very citizens he should be protecting. Our tax dollars should be used to improve our communities, to build schools, parks, and roads. Now, moreover, we need a moratorium on building in this county, and we need it now. Marcelo Baines neglecting inability to grow this county in a healthy and a responsible manner have put us in a precarious situation. We cannot continue to expand without proper planning and infrastructure. This reckless growth only serves to exasperate the issues we are already facing, overburdened roads, underfunded services, and a county that looks worse every day. Chairman Burns has, Chairman Baines has deliberately kept important information off the agenda for District three, not out of, out of a sense of duty to the people, but out of spite and personal vendettas. This kind of behavior is not just unethical, it's a clear abuse of power, and yet, here we are, being asked to pay for his defense, this is beyond comprehension. To everyone here today, I ask, where does this end? If we allow this to happen, we are setting a dangerous precedent. We cannot, and we must not, allow our tax dollars, tax dollars to be used to shield corrupt leaders from the consequences of their own actions. Chairman Baines has betrayed the trust of the people, it is time for him to be held accountable and not bailed out by the people, he very wronged. Thank you.
We will, we will not have outbursts of applause, you will be removed, I promise you.
Under threat, Nation knows, Jackson is my name, I live here in Newton County. Uh, now, you guys have heard the people speak. The question is, what are you gonna do? Are you gonna stand with the people, or are you gonna stand with corruption? Thank you.
Thank you. State your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, my name's Halima Mohammed, I reside at ten Millbury Portidale, and I am speaking in regards to the Dobbs Landing preliminary plat. Um, I just wanted to make sure that everyone is aware that the water and sewage department is currently doing a study to see how much treatment capacity that we have, and I just want you guys to take that into consideration before you vote on that.
Thank you. Anyone else? That portion of my meeting is closed, I wanna step back to an item I neglected to go through, and it was the thought for the day, and I'll, I'm gonna insert my own here, it's from Robert F. Kennedy, and it's a paraphrase, uh, "There's something immoral about not doing what you believe is right." Uh, again, that's a paraphrase from Robert F. Kennedy. With that, let's see, we'll move to the, um, item five A, which is the Vice Chair's report, at this time, I'll call on Chief Turner, our fire chief.
Thank you, thank you, Vice Chair, for lending me your time, uh, for this special recognition, and also, thank you for the Board of Commissioners and your support, uh, since I've been, uh, employed at Newton County. First, I wanna see if a resident by the name of William L. Jordan is present, if so, could you come to the podium, and also Lieutenant Mike Richmond, and any of his crew members that he have. First, I wanna take this opportunity, because we don't get a chance, uh, to recognize our she-ros and heroes of Newton County. Um, we did have a resident that had an incident that happened, uh, earlier during the year, that appreciated the effort that these members provided in the service they provided in a professional standpoint, uh, to save a lot of property that could have been lost. And I wanna read the letter that was presented to the county in this recognition. "On Saturday, the twenty-fourth, my shopping shed located on my property burned to the ground. I lost two classic cars, two trikesters, all my gardening equipment, tools, and et cetera. We were not home at the time of the incident. Uh, the house, uh, with the effort of Lieutenant Mike Richmond, that was the incident commander from Fire Station Two, the fire truck initially responded to an address in the adjacent subdivision, because someone there had seen the fire and called it in. When the trucks arrived in the subdivision, Lieutenant Richmond saw the fire in the other subdivision, uh, and ran through a creek, jumped over a creek, and ran through the woods. Uh, he approached the house, uh, the shack was already burnt to the ground, it was six feet from my structure. With his action, he ran another fourth of a mile down the driveway to locate the truck, to, uh, advise the truck whether to pull up in. As the truck, uh, turned into the driveway, they extinguished the fire and the trees and the vegetation. The burned area was then six feet of the house, a strong, I strongly suspected that without Mike's effort in getting the fire truck to the scene, our house would have also burned to the ground. While Mike may not be a hero in this sense, as he rescued people from burning buildings, he was unquestionable our hero that night. I am writing simply to thank Newton County Fire Department and to acknowledge Mike's role that night in saving our house." So I think it was very important for us to recognize Lieutenant Richmond and his crew and their diligent effort in this incident, and we do have a small token of appreciation, uh, to show our appreciation. So, pretty much, this is a shadow box that has, uh, a piece of fire hose in, inside of it, and, uh, a small plaque. Do you, you wanna, you got anything to say?
I just wanna say, uh, thank you to anyone who's involved in this recognition, and thank you, Chief Turner. Uh, that was a long night, and a very interesting night, to say the least, uh, definitely a very, uh, difficult one for me as an incident commander, but, uh, everyone on scene did phenomenal, including my driver behind me, engineer Jimmy Williams, and I just wanna thank them, thanks Station Two, your crew, and A shift, and Newton County Fire Rescue.
Thank you. 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 With that, we'll move to item number six, and that's the County Manager's Report. Mr. Cooper?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair, Board members and residents of Newton County, I come before you today with the County Manager's Report. We're gonna talk about the second P today, purpose, optimum service delivery, we just witnessed that, uh, through the fine efforts of the commander and his fire station team, so we salute them, but today, we're gonna talk about optimum service delivery. During the last board meeting, there was a transportation, uh, infrastructure, pardon me, report, and we talked about the transportation projects that are in queue right now. Uh, there are fifteen projects in queue, uh, five are under construction, six are in design phase, and three are in the process of selecting consultants, and one is in the advertising bid component. Here is an illustration of said, uh, projects, I believe that it was, uh, shown to the, uh, board and during the last board meeting, but again, fifteen projects, status is identified as well. I bring this to the forefront, because we, as a public works and transportation department, we're forward-thinking right now in terms of projects that we need to look at, and so, our transportation workforce unit decided to develop a resurfacing proposal project that I would like to share with the board, as well as the community this afternoon or this evening. In developing this project, we tried to be equitable in terms of looking at all five districts and looking at the roads with the greatest needs. Now, we will welcome feedback from respective board members in terms of how they feel in reference to this, but again, the Transportation Department, they're the subject matter experts, and we lean on them for just that. Let's start with District One, three roads were, pardon me, four roads were identified, Malcolm Road, Newton Factory, Bridge Road, two thirteen, and Jeff Cook Road. When you look at the number of miles that are proposed to be resurfaced with all of them, the total miles would be just over four miles, and when you look at the description, we're talking about resurfacing said roads, and we're looking at it just over one-point three million dollars in projected costs. When you look at District Two, uh, our transportation SMEs felt Bethany Road, Smith Store Road, and Magnet Road needs resurfacing. Uh, when you look at the total miles that would be potentially resurfaced, just over three-point-six, and again, that projected cost is one-point-three million. When you look at District Three, Kirkland Road has been identified, Macedonia Church Road, and Boswick and Elaton Roads have been identified, the length would be three-point-seven miles, again, a little over one-point-three million dollars. When you look at District Four, District Four was unique, because we looked at a road, but then we also looked at two subdivisions. So, Spring Hill Drive, uh, would be at point-seven miles of resurface, and then we looked at Trellany Subdivision, and in Trellany Subdivision, we looked at Trellany Circle, Cliffview Drive, Trellany Ave, Trellany Way, and Philstone Lane as potential resurfacing roads. We also looked at Spring Valley Estates as well, and when you look at Spring Valley Estates, we're looking at Spring Valley Way, Spring Valley Court, Spring Valley Cove, Spring Valley Crossing, Spring Valley Trace, and Spring Valley Cap, and when you look at the miles in totality, three-point-seven-two miles of resurfacing in District Four, and proposed, again, just over one-point-three million dollars. When we looked at District Five, we looked at Stone Road, Alcovey Trestle, and Airport Road, the length of miles that'll be resurfaced, proposed, three-point-five miles, and the total cost, again, is just over one-point-three million dollars. So when you look at this in the collective, there's eighteen, just, just under nineteen miles of resurfacing that we're proposing amongst all districts, and when you look at the miles covered per district, on average, that's about three-point-seven-three, and then when you look at the total projection of the cost, it's six-point-five million, and when you break that down in average of district, you're looking at one million three-hundred and one thousand or so dollars. The why, why are we looking at it now? Well, we talk about growth, we've talked about moratoriums, and we've talked about the population here, and we know that growth is inevitable, but we do have to look at it from a smart growth perspective, but also, not only is Newton County growing in population, it's growing in profile. We are the I-twenty East corridor count, if you will, uh, with the movies and things that we produce and shows, we're it off of I-twenty East. So when you look at our census data from twenty-twenty, we had a, just under a hundred-and-thirteen-thousand people within this county. That was just over twelve-thousand increase in population from the twenty-ten census, but when you look at the data now in real time, since twenty-twenty, we've had nearly seventy-six-hundred, uh, people moving to this county, which is an estimated population of a hundred-and-twenty-thousand. So, we need to do something in reference to our roads. Aside from the population, again, I'm gonna go back to our profile. Uh, in twenty-twenty-four, the Covington Welcome Center reported that we had nearly a hundred-and-nineteen-thousand visitors to this great county, and the calendar year of twenty-twenty-three. With added guests, impact to our roads and infrastructure is there, causing an additional strain on our critical infrastructure. So, with all great ideas, there's a, a component known as funding, and funding would need to be implemented in a project of this magnitude. So I want to share this with the board, as well as the residents of this community, so that we can start thinking about collectively, as a board and a government, of what funding sources we could use to start said projects. In addition to that, we're also open to any suggestions from the board that they may have in reference to infrastructure. I yield back my time, Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. County Manager. Uh, any discussion after those? Mr. Henderson?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. I, I remember the last meeting, we talked a bit, and I think I asked that we discuss PFAS, Forever Chemicals, and at the last meeting, I, I think, um, Mr. Cooper, you were, uh, our County Manager, Mr. Cooper, uh, I think you, was he or, yeah, okay, James Brown, I know, yeah, James Brown, Mr. Cooper, you were out, and so I asked that we have a update each and every commission that we have into, uh, until PFAS, Forever Chemicals. Forever Chemicals is no longer in our water system. And I think that James Brown, I call him James, he had said that he think it was just about out, and they cut the lines or something, or stopped pumping water from where the line or somewhere, I guess, had it in it. And I think we learned from the news articles and TV programs that most of it that gets in the water comes from a textile plant or something, or either in the fields or whatever. We need to have a report on that until it's all in our water system. Now, I understand that you can get it, they say it can be in bottled water, but I'm not concerned so much about bottled water. I'm concerned about Newton County's water supply, the water supply that we have invested, Newton County has, have invested a lot of money into, to make sure that our system is clean. So could we, every meeting, until we know that it's gone, that there'd be a report on what the levels are in our water system? And one other thing that I had, I think I requested was that anybody who may want to buy a test kit, nowhere one may be available, that they can test maybe how much Forever Chemicals in our system. And I'm going to close with this. This is not a Democratic issue or Republican issue or independent issue. This is a people issue. And let us not do like we did ethylene oxide. There were so many people who had ethylene oxide and had cancer and stuff in the community, and we never said a word. And it saddened me when I went to the house over in Sales Grove, and people called me from Covington Mill and tell me about their journey. And so let us just kind of make sure that all people in Newton County are informed. And if you want to, if you want to go out and get some kind of specialist or doctor or whatever, county report on this good, but we need to make sure that our people, our citizens be informed of what's in our community. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. And I actually will provide you all with the report that James actually provided. But here are the key facts about PFAS right now. We have less than one percent overall water supply levels of PFAS. That's extremely low. And the levels are just a few parts per trillion, which is equal to a second within thirty-two million years, or six inches out of the ninety-three million mile journey to the sun, right? So where was the PFAS located in Newton County? It was located in William Street Facility. And that facility, right now, is in the process of being decommissioned, okay? And that facility had less than, or provided less than one percent of our water supply. And to your point, Commissioner, you're absolutely right about the textile mills. But in addition to the textiles mills, paper mills, airports, metal finishers, agriculture, you name it, that's a part of it. But like you stated, I will get you all the reports so that you can review, and we'll provide updates regularly. Thank you.
Mr. Sanders. I'm sorry, we got to, we have to go to our public hearing, seven thirty. Thank you. All right, this time, we'll move into our public hearing. Ms. Shayna Appleweight, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Good evening, Board of Commissioners. We just have two items this evening for zoning. Brian, you're going to advance the slides or this doesn't work, right? Okay, so our first item this evening is an appeal case. It is for the Dobbs Landing subdivision. It's APP twenty-four dash zero 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 five. Name of the appeal applicant is inside civil engineering, Corey Guthrie, and the rep is Simon Bloom. The original case number would be the preliminary plat, which is PP twenty-four dash zero 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 six. And the original applicant was also inside civil engineering. Property owner is Tupacard Covington LLC, in care of Tupac-- two capital partners LLC. The address is at Crowell Road and Harold Dobbs Road, and there are four parcels included. The tax IDs are twenty-five dash three eight, twenty-five dash one seven three, twenty-five dash one seven four, and twenty-six dash twenty-five. The proposed use is a mixed-use residential, and is going to have a civic and a commercial component with it. The existing zonings are two, single-family residential, and it is in the tier-two Almond Watershed would be the Yellow River, and the character area is the established suburban core. And there's a little bit of the live-work character area in there as well. Density for the townhomes, so it is a mixed-use, I mean, single-family and townhomes. The density for the townhomes is fourteen point nine five units per acre, and the single-family would be at six point seven four units. And they're proposing three hundred and eighty-seven lots on two hundred and thirteen point eight five nine acres. And this is located in District Three. So those were the subject site statistics. And of course, the appeal request is to appeal the planning commission's decision to deny-- the next slide, please, Brian. Yeah. To appeal the planning commission's decision to deny the preliminary plat extension, PP twenty-four dash zero 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 six for Dobbs Landing. And of course, the original request was to present the plat extension to the planning commission for the above subdivision. And just again, they were proposing three hundred and eighty-seven lots, and that would be a mixture of townhomes and single-family homes. Just a brief history, on seven twenty-six, 2022, the planning commission approved this preliminary plat for Dobbs Landing. And then on six twenty-five, 2024, the planning commission denied the preliminary plat extension for Dobbs Landing. During the meeting in June of this year, on the twenty-fifth, there was opposition at the planning commission meeting, and the planning commission members expressed concern for traffic that the subdivision would produce. And they also expressed concern that they had not heard from the United States Army Corps of Engineers, that's the USAs, because they had not, at the time, hadn't approved the LDP. The next slide would be just the character areas. I wouldn't read through that, it is included in your packet. However, this is according to the comprehensive plan. The character areas that it's located in, it does accommodate for the mixed-use subdivision as well as the zonings that they have proposed here. They're also in the live-work corridor character area, which also accommodates the mixed-use and the commercial uses that they are proposing. The preliminary plat analysis. Next slide. And again, I won't read through all of this, but in 2021, this development originally came before the Board of Commissioners as a mixed-use development, and it also included a park on the eastern side of Crowell Road. And at that time, they had applied for an overlay tier change so that they can have that park as a part of the subdivision. And that was OTC twenty-one dash zero 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 one. And then in December of two thousand twenty-one, the Board of Commissioners, they denied the request for that change. So subsequently, the applicant revised their plat, and then it presented, they didn't include that part on Crowell Road on the eastern side, so they updated it to include the current preliminary plat that we have today. And on June twenty-sixth, 2022, that plat was approved by the planning commission. They have since then been working, and they've actually completed their land disturbance permit. They've obtained all approvals, including that for the Army Corps. And today, they're here to, you know, request that extension or to appeal the planning commission's decision. So this proposed mixed-use development, it is within proximity of other residential developments. The existing land uses and zonings in the immediately surrounding area, they are similar to what they are presenting. The development remains in line with the comprehensive plan. And of course, it lies within the established suburban core character area and the live-work character area. And staff has the opinion of the proposed preliminary plat, which lies in the Almond overlay tier two. It meets the requirements of the unified development ordinance. And should the preliminary plat extension be approved, it will be conceptual in nature until the final plat is approved. So comments from staff. So planning and zoning, again, just to recap, the applicant submitted application for the extension of the preliminary plat that was approved back in 2022. The Dobbs Landing mixed-use subdivision has three hundred and eighty-seven units. That would be a hundred and thirty-three townhomes, two hundred and fifty-four single-family homes. Development comprises two hundred and thirteen point eight five nine acres, which would include some floodplain, wetlands, and streams. And of course, it's zoned R two, single-family, and in the Almond overlay tier two. The LDP was submitted to Development Services back in November of 2022, and they have been working on it since then. It is currently approved as of seven twenty-five, 2024, which would have been last month. There were no proposed changes made from the original preliminary plat that was submitted. The request to the planning commission was originally about a hundred and twenty days, but they've actually amended that to ask for twelve months, that's to ensure that while they're working on the ground with their, you know, with the approved land disturbance permit, it'll have enough time to put in all the infrastructure that is needed before they go to final plat. The transportation department, they have completed their review, and they have approved it. And their approval also included a right-of-way encroachment permit to allow for the improvements in the right-of-way. The fire marshal, they reviewed and approved the land disturbance permit as well. We have engineered in stormwater, they have also approved the land disturbance permit. And all the external agencies, we now have all approvals from the Newton County Water and Sew Authority, EPD, the Georgia Soil and Water Conservation, and United States Army Corps of Engineers. So the preliminary plat extension is approved. Again, it is conceptual only until the final plat has been issued, and it must meet or exceed all the requirements of the unified development ordinance. So comments from the planning commission meeting from six twenty-five, 2024, and we kind of touched on this briefly, but their concern was that they had not, as yet, obtained the Army Corps of Engineers approval. And of course, they also expressed concern for increased traffic and the densities that this subdivision could bring. Citizens also expressed concerns for traffic, schools, and infrastructure at this meeting. And unfortunately, the applicant was not present, Madame Eaton, due to a family emergency that developed. So in conclusion, the proposed preliminary plat, which was approved on seven twenty-six, 2022 by the planning commission, and due to the time it took to obtain approvals from external agencies, the twenty-four-month timeframe for the applicant to obtain a final plat expired. So the applicant is requesting an extension of the preliminary plat to allow time to complete the final plat requirements for the development. And again, there were no changes that were made from the original plat that was approved. The recommended conditions, so in reviewing items for Division four five zero of the Newton County zoning ordinance and Section fourteen fifteen dash zero three zero of the development regulations, staff finds that the plat and the LDP meet the minimum requirements. So should the Board of Commissioners approve the plat extension, staff would recommend the approval of the preliminary plat extension be subject to the following conditions. One, the plat extension shall be for twelve months to allow adequate time for the final plat to be completed. Earlier, staff had forwarded over to the board an email from the applicant that we received this morning, and I believe they are going to express this when they come up here, but they are also requesting an additional twelve months on top of this. So there will be twenty-four months that they are asking for, and that would be for the board to consider. So two, all recommendations from the initial plat, which was approved back in 2022 by the planning commission, shall remain in place. And these included, A, prior to obtaining a land disturbance permit or a final plat, all comments from the Newton County Development Services Department to include stormwater, landscape, zone requirements, the fire marshal, as well as the transportation engineer shall be addressed. B, all comments from other external agencies, such as the Water Authority, GDOT, United States Army Corps, EPD, Georgia Soil and Water Conservation, shall be addressed as applicable through the final plat. And C, the civic area will remain privately owned but available to the public, and that would be as a part of their mixed use. So they're doing residential, commercial, and civic, and the civic portion will be open to the public, which includes a walk-in trail that will tie into the Yellow River trails that the Public Works Department is working on. So we have here our aerial view. These are the four parcels that this subdivision would encompass. It is in R two zoning. That is your second slide. It is in the Almond overlay tier two, that's the green area. And of course, this is the preliminary plat, the second page kind of gives you a layout of what they are proposing. So the red area, that would be the commercial component. The blue areas, you have the trails in there, and then you've got like the townhomes and the single-family homes further south. This concludes staff's presentation. The applicant is present, and they have their presentation as well. If there are any questions for staff.
Thank you, Ms. Appleweight. At this time, we'll have our public hearing, and we'll open it up for those who want to speak in favor, including the applicant. You have ten minutes to do, ten minutes aggregate to do so. State your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Mr. Vice Chair, Simon Bloom, nine seven seven Ponson Leon Avenue. Thank you, Ms. Appleweight. You did all the work I needed to do, and I appreciate your efforts. The keys here is this is a really narrow issue before the board. It's not a revisitation of the zoning, it's not a revisitation of the technical aspects of the project. It's simply whether we should have an extra twenty-four months to complete, to get to a submission of the final plat application or the final plat. That's the only issue before the board. And I appreciate the existence of the ordinance in the UDO, which is designed to move people along. Once you get the preliminary plat, the clock starts, and you should have twenty-four months to get things done. And for most projects, that's a pretty reasonable amount of time. But as you could see from the presentation, and I can go into as much detail or as little as you'd like, the project engineer is with me as well, Mr. Guthrie. But if you, as you can see from the project, it's a much more complex project than simply throwing up fifty houses, which is why it has taken so long to get particularly the outside agencies over which we and you have no control to get their approvals, the revisions, and their responses all back. The good news is, it's all done. All of it's been approved, all of it's been done, the core has been done. That was one of the planning commission's main concerns, was they didn't have an approval yet from the Army Corps of Engineers. That's been done, as of July, the corps has approved it. The other concern, which is a legitimate one, which is you have a planning commission meeting over a request for an extension, and the applicant doesn't show up. I get that, too. And believe me, I would, I speak for Mr. Guthrie when I tell you, he would much rather have been here than where he had to be for the family medical emergency that he had to deal with. So those are not, those two reasons to deny the extension of the timeframe have been resolved and are no longer applicable. So really, the question before you is, is it appropriate for a project of this complexity to have an extra twenty-four months to get the horizontal development done? Because as you all know, preliminary plat's approved, LDP is approved, you have a pre-construction meeting with the departments, you talk about the next steps, and then we go into horizontal development. Move dirt, install infrastructure, put in roads, curbs, gutters, utilities and whatnot. And in this project, as you probably noticed, there is a ton of public-facing and public-serving infrastructure that's going in. I think it's something, it's like a half a mile, I think, of trails within this project to connect up to the Yellow River Trail. One of the things that was so important about getting this done correctly was that during the process of getting all these approvals, the Dobbs Road realignment was happening. I didn't see it on one of those projects, because I think it's almost done, Mr. County Manager, but that realignment was happening, and we couldn't very well get our LDP lined up while the road that splits through the middle of this project was changing. And that was part of the reason, just to give you an example, I mean, I can go through a dozen of them, as to why it took so long. The Army Corps took eighteen months to get the buffer variances and encroachment variances approved. The EPD took four or five turns of the application to get it finally approved. We had a plan review change here at the county, going through the traffic department, the traffic engineer department, we had a change in reviewers and a change in staff. So this is not about me making excuses as to why it took so long, it took what it took. But I don't think anyone in this room, including the planning department, would characterize what the developer and the builder have done is sitting on their hands, which is what the code section is designed to prevent. It's designed to prevent someone from buying a piece of property, getting a preliminary plat, and then sitting on their hands. That, by the record in front of you, is not what happened here. So I will leave you back to, and I'm happy to answer questions, and the engineer's happy to answer questions, but I'll leave you with the notion that this is a very narrow question. The question is simply, will the board view this code section as permissible, permissive in allowing another twenty-four months to get from LDP, which, as Ms. Appleweight said, is ready to be issued tomorrow? All the county departments, all the external agencies have approved it, it's ready to be issued tomorrow, pre-con meeting on Monday, moving dirt on Tuesday. be issued tomorrow, pre-con meeting on Monday, moving dirt on Tuesday, with your blessing tonight, and blowing and going to get this horizontal development done so that we can apply for a final plat, submit a final plat in the next, hopefully, sixteen to eighteen months. But I'm asking for twenty-four months because I don't want to have to put you all through this again in twenty-three months when something unforeseen happens. What I expect is that this is a project that once you bless the expansion, the extension, they will get going in earnest because they have every incentive and motivation to do so. The dirt is sitting there undeveloped and not generating any revenue for anyone. So again, my request is specific. I ask that the board approve an extension of the timeframe within which to submit for a final plat to be twenty-four months from today. You have a very, very accomplished and knowledgeable county attorney to advise you on this. I wish I could tell you that there was something in your code that governs how you review my request, but I have not found anything other than the power of common sense, which is, this code section is designed to keep people and developers moving along. You will see from this record that they have done that, and therefore, I ask for the common sense solution, which is to simply give them this additional twenty-four months to get the horizontal development done and the final plat submitted. I thank you for your indulgence, and I'm happy to entertain any questions that the board might have, as is the developer, as is the engineer.
Thank you. So I would assume you want to reserve the remainder of your time for rebuttals?
If you please, Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak in favor of this project or of this issue? Anyone else want to speak in favor? That portion of our meeting is closed. Anyone want to speak in opposition to this particular initiative or issue? You have ten minutes to do so. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Susan Jackson, I live at one-ten Wisteria Boulevard. I'm going to say it maybe three times so you can hear me. Impact fees, impact fees, impact fees. My question is, if we extend this twenty-four months, does the impact fees that we have coincide for the three hundred and eighty-seven homes that they're building? For example, our impact fees are one thousand six hundred and, one thousand seven hundred and sixty-five dollars. So with three hundred and eighty-seven homes being built, that's a total of six hundred and eighty-three thousand and fifty-five dollars. If we were comparable to one of the most, the number-one county in our great state of Georgia, which is Forsyth County, their impact fees are about sixty-five hundred dollars. That's why they have nice parks, nice roads, and it's clean and have great schools. Okay, now, if we were to increase our impact fees, not even to sixty-five hundred dollars, but to five thousand dollars, we would, this, that's, this particular project would raise one million nine hundred thousand, three, thirty-five thousand dollars, okay?
Ma'am, let me stop you for a second. Are you in favor of this appeal or are you opposed to this?
Opposed.
You're opposed to this appeal?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm giving you a reason why I'm opposed.
Please continue.
Okay? Because our, that's the reason why developers come into our county, because our impact fees are the lowest. There's a hundred and fifty-nine counties in Georgia, we are one of the lowest regarding impact fees. And also, our county has misused our impact fees for the last decade. And since this project is in District Three, all of those impact fees should be used in District Three. And impact fees are broken up into four categories: roads, libraries, our police, and other things. Now, I have open records requests, I have them for the last decade, and our developers have not, well, the developers have paid them, but the county managers have not distributed those impact fees to the correct districts. They put them all in a general fund and say, this is how we're going to spend it. That's why certain districts lack certain, certain things, because the money hasn't been used. So my question is to them, with the moratorium, can we increase our impact fees and make this developer pay for those impact fees because of the, the amount of people they're going to bring into that particular district? The strain on our roads, the strain on our schools, the strain on our police, the strain on our fire departments, that's where those, where those impact fees go, okay? So we don't mind the building, but increase our impact fees so we can give the people what they need, which is, so our police officers can have great salaries, and our schools can have what they need, and we can pay our teachers and everyone, and our county workers they can have benefits and healthcare. That's all I have to say. Impact fees, impact fees, impact fees, impact fees, impact fees, and impact fees.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else want to speak in opposition? State your name and address for the record, please.
Greetings, my name is Thersia Hodge. I'm also a fifteen-year resident of Newton County, the board secretary of Silver Ridge Farms, in which this development will be my next-door neighbor. Three hundred and eighty-seven lots. I ask you guys to deny, 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 four times, for those four plats. Deny the extension. And by the way, Harold Dobbs Road realignment is not almost done. I drive it every single day to and from my subdivision. Thank you.
State your name and address for the record, please.
Carolyn Woodward, Broadleaf subdivision, District Three. As far as the promotions that are going on here, we talked in the last zoning meetings, and I want you guys to hear very clearly, we want a moratorium. Just because there's three hundred and some odd units going in here doesn't mean that there's only two cars per unit. These are not family-friendly homes, these are not for children. So you can imagine four adults living in each unit very easily, especially since we've got multi-generational problems going on. We haven't even talked about what these are going to be renting for. But we said, we want single-family homes, we want homes on one acre or more. We need homes for our young families that they need a dog, you know, a place for their dog to roam and their kids to play. We already did assessments based on the last conglomeration, we give you the two-year extension, you're already sitting here beating us on the head saying, well, you said back in June, two years ago, that it was okay. Well, two years ago was two years ago. A lot of water has gone onto this bridge. There are so many projects in the pipeline right now that we, as citizens, can't even keep up, okay? So I have to come here because I don't get a full agenda anytime, even though I've requested it multiple times. We get a skeleton agenda, and that's not enough for me to do my investigation. But I'll be here every time to tell you, no more bloat, no more multifamily housing, no more condos, no more apartments, no fifteen-minute cities. We are on to it, and we say no. I don't care what Kemp says, I don't care what any of y'all say, we live here. We don't live off Ponce de Leon, we live here in Newton County.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, I'm Sandra Heinz. I am going to be the neighbor if you allow them to build.
State your name and address.
It's Sandra Heinz, Thirty Stream Glen. I'm Silver Ridge Farms subdivision president, okay? We want you to deny it. If you don't live over there where we're living right now, it, traffic, we don't have enough police, we don't have enough public service, we don't have, it's horrible, okay? But you have all these builders coming in, and my main thing that I need for you guys to understand, where's the moratorium? Where, when are we going to look at the zoning? When are we going to revisit the zoning to change the zoning? Because that is the major problem here, okay? We have zoning that should have been changed years ago because of the population change here. So my vote, your vote, should be no to extend this. They had enough time. He's talking about two years? No, it's time, time is up, okay? Please vote no.
Thank you.
Maya Allen, District Three, been a resident for a long time. I again say no, no, no.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak in opposition?
Good evening, Marie Million, Neely Manor. I just want to say no. Once again, the school's overcrowding, traffic, there are new developments being built currently. So even if a traffic study was done, it's already behind because even by Newton High School, we have two hundred seventeen apartments going up, so this is the last thing that we need. And you have to also remember that that road won't be updated, Crowell Road, won't be updated until twenty forty. So that's going to have a major impact on traffic. So please vote this down, it's a no. The people here don't want it, and the fact that they're telling us that this park is going to be benefiting us, if we're saying we don't want it, we don't want it. So it's a no for me.
Thank you. State your name and address for the record, please.
Kim Young, Crowell Road. I lived right down the street from Dobbs. When we did the overlay years ago, the almond overlay, we were under the impression at that time that the water on Dobbs property, you had to be so many feet away from streams and the ponds and everything, and we were informed that probably not even half of the property was buildable because of the streams. So we're going to block them up, we're going to dam them up. We've seen the mess that they're doing with the Harold Dobbs. I don't know how many culverts they've replaced because they blow them out every time we have a flood. That's a floodplain area. You know, we don't want the houses, we don't want the apartments. My husband sat out the other day, we, on Crowell Road, ten minutes, two hundred and twenty-five cars, ten minutes. Nobody's done a traffic study. You know, I drive it every day. There's been no traffic study when I came down Thirty-Sixth tonight. That's the first traffic study things across the road that I've seen. Nobody has done a traffic study. So we don't need any more of this. You know, I agree, back to the acre lots, I say no to approving the extension because it's going to be a disaster. We're going to have another flood like we had in ninety-something where it flooded over Crowell Road. Those people are going to be underwater because they have rerouted the water with this rerouting of the access road, with this rerouting of Harold Dobbs. It's going to be a nightmare.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak in opposition? You have a minute and fifty-five seconds.
Dave Norton, New Bern, Georgia. I live in District One, I don't live anywhere near this project, but in the county manager's report, he stated the population, since the twenty-twenty census, the population had grown almost eight thousand. This has been in the works for two years, the twenty-four month is up. It's not the county's fault that Army Corps of Engineers or whoever else took their time in giving their approvals. A lot can change in that two years. This process needs to start over so that it can be reviewed on today's circumstances. I'm opposed, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak in opposition? You have one minute and thirteen seconds.
I have you real quick. Halima Mohammed, Portidale, Georgia. I just want everyone to know that please check with the Department of Sewage and Water, they are doing a study, and we want to make sure that we are not going to be over capacity, over capacity with the development, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else want to speak in opposition? That portion of our meeting is closed. We have rebuttal time, if that's needed, of three minutes and forty-four seconds, almost three, three forty-five, almost.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Just a couple of things, just to make sure that we're crystal clear about the mission of the board for this particular issue. The mission is not to revisit the wisdom of the project's existence. The property has been zoned for the project. The property has been zoned for the project. And, more importantly, there has been a preliminary plat approval for the project. Neither of those go away. So this is simply a question of whether we waste the county's time going back to the drawing board and doing the exact same thing over again. That's the only question that's before the board. It's not whether the project happens or not. The zoning is in place, the rights are vested in the zoning, the rights are vested in the plat, the county, all of the agencies have tested the plan for this project against the code. That's their job, is to test it against the UDO, to make sure that it complies technically, legally, and every other way, and they've all said that it does. So the narrow question for the board is just whether they have to go back and start the plating process again, or, which is going to be a waste of everybody's time and money. It's not going to be a question of whether the project happens, because all of the rights and the owner have vested at this point. As for, I think it's a very valid point to ask whether there's sufficient capacity for water and sewer, I would want to know that also. And the county's department, I should not say the county, but Newton County Water and Sewer Authority have signed off on this to confirm that there is sufficient capacity for sewer and for provision of water. That's been signed off. I completely agree with the concern about traffic. I would be concerned about traffic also. But the Department of Transportation for the county has reviewed this project and the density and all the uses and has signed off on it. So we're not, we're not in a zoning hearing as if we were considering whether to rezone a piece of blank bad dirt into a dense residential mixed-use project. That's not what this hearing is. All of that has been done, and those rights have all vested in the property owner at this point. So the only question is whether we get on with it or we redo what's already been done. And that takes up this Appleweight, Appleweight's department's time, all of the county manager's reports' time, going back through the process again, which doesn't get anyone nor address any of the concerns that you've heard. It won't address a single one, none of them, other than spending everybody's money on doing it again. So that's why I said that the barometer to be applied here is common sense more than it is anything else. If we were here for a rezoning, different question, completely different question, and I would be singing a completely different tune. But that's not what you have in front of you. The planning commission denied this extension because the applicant wasn't here, because he was dealing with a family medical emergency, and because the corps hadn't provided its approval yet. He's here, and the corps has approved it, as has every other external and internal agency of the county. All have said yes, then the project is shovel-ready as we sit here today. I appreciate the board's indulgence, and again, ask, for twenty-four months, which again, is just to go from LDP issuance, pre-con meeting, to submission of the final plat. That's all that's going to be done in that timeframe. If you think that that is excessive, I'm sure that we would be-
Thank you, that concludes our, that concludes our hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Sanders, I believe this is District Three.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a few questions. Shayna, what is the timeframe once an applicant submits, once they submit their application and it's approved, and they're given a certain amount of time to submit information based on this appeal? Before the extension, what amount of time they had before then?
To appeal a case?
No, not to appeal the case. Once the applicant, once the applicant submits their application, and it was approved, because they're asking for, first they asked for a twelve-month, because when it went to planning and zoning, it was twelve, now it's before us, it's twenty-four, they're asking for an extension. What is the amount of time they have before the extension came about? Am I being clear?
I'm not sure I'm understanding where you're coming from.
Okay, they're having, they're asking for an extension-
Correct.
-in regards to the plat, am I correct? What is the, the normal time before asking for an extension?
They have to ask for an extension before, usually before the plat expired. So the plat expired on seven twenty-six, they went to the planning commission in June, seven, six twenty-five.
So they had, how much time before it expired on seven twenty-six? You said expired on seven twenty-six?
Yeah, it was set to expire July twenty-six, and with them knowing that, they went to the planning commission in June, June twenty-fifth-
Okay.
-to apply for the extension of the plat.
Okay, I understand that. So how much amount of time they had before the expiration date, the original expiration date? Were they given a year, two years?
Yes, preliminary plats expire twenty-four months after the date it's issued.
So they already had twenty-four months?
Yes, July twenty-fifth would have been their twenty-four, July twenty-six was the twenty-four-month mark.
Okay, so that was my question-
Yes.
-is how much time they had before applying for an extension, which you answered that question, they already had two years to get this information in, am I correct?
Two years to get the final plat approved.
Right, and that's why they're asking for an extension.
Typically, yes, when subdivisions see that their expiration date is approaching, they'll approach the planning department to request an extension, and that's what goes before the planning commission.
Okay. And how many members of the planning commission were available on that day to vote that denied it? Was it all five?
I do not have that record. I do not have that record in front of me. Uh I shouldn't answer the minutes right here. One second. It was a motion five zero.
So five, Planning Commission is representing all districts denied it?
Yes, it was, yeah, the vote was five zero for this particular case.
My next question is, if the Board of Commissioners deny it today, what is the next process for this applicant? What's the next step?
So, yeah, the Board of Commissioners make final decisions and my understanding is that they would have to take the appeal to Superior Court.
Okay.
And maybe Mr. Juxter could comment on that.
Well, I'm gonna make a motion. I'm gonna go with the people, the five members of the Planning Commission that denied application, um agenda item APP twenty-four zero 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 five.
Do I have a second? We have a motion and a second to deny. Is that correct, Ms. Sanders?
Yes, sir.
Uh, any, any discussion? I have a question, Ms. Appleweight. So the, the yes or no to this appeal, uh, will it, it will not impact what is able to, i- if, if they go through another twenty-four months, will it impact, will our decision to not impact what eventually is able to be built there?
Um, so you're saying if it were approved tonight?
No, i- i- if, approval, approved or denied?
Okay.
Does, does, the, the zone, uh, from what I understand, the zoning is in place and eventually they'll be able to, they can build whatever they want, whether we say yes or no tonight, now, to write?
It is a by right subdivision. Um, so they have, uh, they've met the requirements of the ordinance and it just depends on what a decision is tonight, whether they start over or whether they, you know, advance with it. But it is a by right subdivision, yes, sir.
Any more discussion? All in favor of the denial? All opposed? Denied, five zero.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Appleweight. Uh, next is on our agenda, on the uh hearing agenda, will not require a hearing, if I'm correct. Ms. Appleweight, item number two?
Yes, uh, this is a resolution. Um, it's a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Newton County, Georgia, that acts an emergency moratorium on the acceptance or approval of new applications, seeking one, to rezon property to any zoning category that authorizes residential uses. Two, preliminary plat approval for any development that includes any residential use. And three, request for temporary building permits under Section five ten dash six four zero of Newton County Unified Development Ordinance. So staff is asking um for a moratorium for, you know, these three reasons. We have um actually begun working on updating the U D O and this would be an appropriate time for us to, you know, pause on residential developments coming in while we can focus on the ordinance.
Thank you, Ms. Appleweight. So, County Attorney, would you care to weigh in?
Uh, Mr. Vice Chair, I'd be happy to. So the, the proposed moratorium in front of you will impose a moratorium upon any rezoning to any category that includes a residential component. It would also impose a moratorium on the approval of any preliminary plaits for any development that includes a residential use. And lastly, it would impose a moratorium on the issuance of permits for temporary buildings, temporary building permits for residential use. So this moratorium focuses exclusively upon residential use and the stated reason is to allow the Board of Commissioners a breathing opportunity to update your ordinances, primarily your zoning ordinances, to bring them into compliance with today's world. Um, we frequently have instances where projects are presented that are permitted under a specific zoning category, even though by all accounts that specific zoning category is not acceptable or the conditions permitted within that zoning category are not acceptable to the board or to the public at large. You have already begun embarking on the process of revising your zoning ordinance. Consultants have been retained, they have begun their work. If I'm not mistaken, they're gonna make a presentation next month, I think.
Yes, they go to the Planning Commission next Tuesday and they're hoping to have an audience with the board in September.
And the expectation is that that process will take the better part of twelve months or more. Uh, you, you all received the draft moratorium and there is, there are a couple of blanks in that that require your answer, which is the duration of the moratorium. So if you choose to impose a moratorium, we would need included in a motion the term of that moratorium. Whether it be six months, twelve months, whatever, you can terminate it early. So if you, if you make a twelve-month res- uh moratorium and by some stroke of, of magic or good luck, we get this thing done, we get new zoning ordinance in eight months, you could lift the moratorium when the zoning ordinance is approved.
And what was the second, the second issue? The, the duration was the first issue?
Two places we need to include the duration. Yeah, that's the, that's the only issue.
Commissioner Sanders.
So I, I hear you say about six to twelve. We, we wanna extend it to about a year and a half or two years to make sure everything's in place.
My recommendation would be you do it, you, you, you impose the moratorium for the shortest possible time to address your issues. Um, you don't wanna impose a moratorium for any time when it's not necessary. The motion, the purpose of a moratorium is you don't have any other option. And what I would recommend is, is consider a twelve-month moratorium today. Um, that does a couple of things. It, it lights a fire under staff. It lights a fire under staff to get the zoning ordinance done. And it also is a reasonable amount of time to get the zoning ordinance done. So I would recommend twelve months. If the zoning ordinance is not complete, if we start running up on a year from now, the zoning ordinance isn't, isn't ready, moratorium can come back to you to be extended.
Commissioner Cal.
Patrick, this does not apply to anybody that's already in the process, is that correct?
That's correct. Uh, there's a, uh, an area of law that we lawyers refer to as vested rights. The rest of the world kinda calls it grandfathered uses. Um, if you've already got a permit applied for, if you've already got a preliminary plat, our preliminary plat is kind of step one in the application for development. If you are already there, the law would allow you to continue your project through its conclusion. So this would apply to new projects entering the pipeline, not those that are within the pipeline.
Okay, one, one follow-up question. I suspect there's gonna be some litigation as to some of the zoning decisions we've made in the last six months. Will those be stopped because of the moratorium or we're gonna follow what the court says?
So any, i- if, if there is a challenge made to the denial of a permit or an application that's pending today, if the court were to rule on that, that ruling would be retroactive. So in, in a sense, that court case would trump our moratorium. The court would say you should have issued it a year ago, therefore I'm gonna issue it to it, basically is how it would work. Now, the court doesn't issue permits, but the, the, in that instance, the moratorium would not operate to stop that particular project.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Mason and then Commissioner Sanders.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, this question is for Shayna and I know that, uh, and even one of the residents said it earlier, which is, she was spot on that a lot of the concerns that we're currently dealing with now when it comes to development, uh, really a lot of that has to do with zoning. And so we truly, truly need to address uh, the zoning, uh, ordinances that we have in place, uh, that needs to be revisited. Uh, now I know Shayna, I believe it was maybe two, possibly three months ago, uh, this board approved you, uh, to move forward with the consultant to come in and review all of the ordinances that we have in place. Um, and so if you can tell the board, where are we when it comes to the review of those ordinances? Uh, and how much longer do you think it will take to have those reviewed to see what needs to be updated so that this board can begin to truly address, uh, these zoning concerns?
Yes. Uh, they officially started, um, July when the budget was approved.
Right.
Uh, we've had a couple of meetings with them since then and as I explained earlier, they are going to be uh, at the Planning Commission meeting next Tuesday to, basically it will be an introduction and to give an overview of, you know, how we're gonna move forward with updating the ordinance. And then they're hoping to also come before the board in September, um, at those meetings. So they would have a breakdown of how we will move forward with that. The, they anticipate it'll take twelve to fifteen months. Um, the contract was for fifteen months. Um, they were aiming for twelve. We just had a few contingency months, so this is why they had those extras. So hopefully next year at this time, we should be, if not finished, close to that.
So i- if it's gonna take until about next year for them to get finished, then this board will need time to actually review what their proposals are so that we can make some final decisions on how we need to reconstruct these ordinances, correct?
Yes, it'll be an interactive process. We will have, um, meetings in each district to begin with. They will, of course, be updating the board from time to time. So they will come before the board a few times, uh, before it's time for adoption. So it'll be kind of a similar to the Planning Commission where we had the public, um, they were involved in it. They had several, you know, meetings before the board to give updates as we moved along. So, yes.
And how long do you think that particular process will take with doing the district um, town halls and the district meetings to get the community involved to, uh, review or, or to, um, explain those to the community? How long do you think that process will take?
We are actually gonna do those, um, before the year end. We're gonna at least get started with those meetings. Um, like I did for the comprehensive plan, I will let the board know, each commissioner know, um, available dates for the district you to select from and a location. So that process is coming. And there's going, um, and I, I know they're gonna explain this when they get here, but there's going to be a, um, interactive website where the public can comment and send us, you know, their comments or their ideas, you know, or their recommendations as well. So we're trying to make it as interactive as possible to get as much feedback as possible from the public, um, from stakeholders. There will be stakeholder interviews, um, steering committees. So it's going to be a full process.
So it sounds like it's a possibility it may take close to about eighteen months, is what it sounds like?
It's twelve to fifteen is what we're contracted for. We contracted for fifteen months and we're trying not to go over that. Yes, sir.
Okay. So, but at least they will have their piece done by this time next year, you said, or?
Uh, fifteen months from July, so twelve to fifteen months from July. So, uh, maybe September, October time, yeah.
And then we still need additional time to kinda have those district meetings? Or you're gonna start those?
That includes, that includes all that, yes. That is the entire process. Yes, sir. So that will happen as we go along.
Okay, so about fifteen to eighteen months is what it sounds like?
The entire process will, yes, yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair.
Commissioner Sanders.
I wanna thank my colleague for answering, asking those questions, Commissioner Mason, 'cause I had a lot of those questions as well. 'Cause it does sound like it might almost be a two-year process. That's why I was asking, should we do it beyond the twelve months? Um, so I know we have to do public hearings when we're changing ordinances and zonings. Am I correct or am I incorrect on that? So is that portion included? 'Cause I heard you say town halls, but I didn't hear about the amount of public hearings we have to have.
Yes, every time they come before, not every time, but when they come before the board, we do have public hearings, um, you know, where the public will have a chance to respond. But those will be scheduled as we go along.
Okay.
But the board will be, um, updated as we go along. They'll be coming here before the board.
Okay. And my last question is, how many applications do we have currently looking to build in Newton County?
For preliminary plaits?
Yes.
Um, currently we have either pending, these are, um, they've either submitted for their pre-application meeting, they've already submitted their plaits, or they're already in the pipeline. We have six, um, preliminary, six to seven preliminary plaits right now that are active, that are on, going through the review process.
Do you happen to know where they are located? Can you, do you have that information? To know where they're proposing to build?
Uh, so we have, we have the Arbor subdivision that is on, um, Brown Bridge Road, not far from the Walmart. That is our, that has been in the pipeline, was approved actually in the early two thousands. We have, um, Conley Mill, which is on Highway two twelve. This particular subdivision, they're only doing nine lots and the majority of them, the, the lots are split between Jasper and Newton County. So they'll front in Jasper County.
Okay.
And the rear portion is in Newton, so they have to do plaits in both counties. We also have, um, a preliminary plat was submitted for Dyna Pace. This came before you for an annexation. They have revised their plans and we submitted a preliminary plat, um, which is under review.
The Dyna Pace is the five hundred houses, right?
Yes, they have reduced that to three eighty now.
Six thirty?
It was close to seven hundred at the time of the annexation. That has been reduced to three eighty. But they have submitted their preliminary plat. Uh, we also have um, Access Road Town Homes. This is adjacent to the Chamesa Park and adjacent to the Covington Creek Springs, but fronts on Access Road.
Access Road in which district?
It is gonna be three.
Y'all killing us. I'm sorry. Sorry, Mr. Chair.
And then we have another plat on Harold Dobbs, that road that was submitted. Um, if you go closer to where Jack Leely and Harold Dobbs is, actually directly opposite Silver Ridge. We speak a big farmland there.
Yeah.
They have submitted a preliminary plat as well.
And how many homes there? How many?
Two hundred and twenty-two proposed lots. Um, there's a Salem Road mixed-use subdivision that is also, uh, submitted. This is at the corner of Kirkland and Salem Road. And I think there are like about seventeen townhomes and then they're doing commercial use as well. So they're doing a mixed-use district. And I think, so those are, um, the ones that we have. And I believe I've captured all of most of them. Um, there may be one other, um, or so, but those are the ones that are currently being processed and they won't be affected by the moratorium.
That's all my questions, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. Any more, any more questions or discussion? All right, what I'm gonna ask is, if someone is going to make a motion to approve that we, the motion reads, "Motion to approve an emergency moratorium residential reason, on residential rezonings and preliminary plaits and please state a timeframe." I'll entertain that motion now.
Okay, I guess, uh, I would like to make a motion to, I would like to move, excuse me, to make a, uh, to approve the resolution for the Board of Commissioners of Newton County, Georgia, enacting an emergency moratorium on the acceptance of approval of the new applications, seeking all the information in the amount of two years.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Miss Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, uh, and this is to the county attorney. And I guess to Ms. Appleweight, do as well. Would that be, you think, a suf- a sufficient amount of time for this to be done? Do, do we need more time?
Uh, well, I'll say in the normal course of business, that should be ample time. Um, and I don't mean to punt a little bit, but, you know, if, depending on how the expert or the, how the consultant's proposals are received by the board and the extent to which the board wants to make modifications of the public, you know, depending on public reaction. But that should be ample opportunity to provide to you a proposed new U D O.
Thank you. All right. Commissioner Cal.
I'm okay with two years. What, what I want you to understand is that if, if the new zoning code is- What I want you to understand is that if, if the new zoning code is done in sixteen months, I will be telling you to lift the moratorium at the sixteen months. Because the basis for the moratorium is to fix your zoning ordinance. You can't fix your zoning ordinance and then leave the moratorium in place just for fun. You can't do that.
All right, before we take a vote, please be courteous. Let's hold our applause down. Please, I'm asking you kindly.
This is Vice Chair.
Ms. Appleweight?
I just need to add, so that we have it on the record, there is the one last subdivision off of Pickett Bridge Road. And they're proposing a hundred and sixty units. So those should be the six or seven.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion and a second on the, Commissioner Sanders, you wanna say?
Mr. Chair, I was gonna ask her what area that was, that's all.
By the Boy Scouts? Yes, District One, yes.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? All opposed? Passes five zero.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. That concludes zoning for this afternoon.
Thank you, Ms. Appleweight. At this time, we will revert back to, that ends our public hearing session. This time, we will revert back to item, the county manager's report, I believe Commissioner Sanders was making comments.
Well, kinda, kinda brought up another question too, 'cause I know the chair and the county manager sets the agenda. And I was asking that question earlier. Is there a reason why we don't include the detailed information to the residents of Newton County on the agenda? Like the, 'cause, for instance, we get a whole agenda packet and I get asked from residents, what is this resolution? I see it on the agenda, but they don't have a copy of the detailed information. Is there a reason why we don't include all that online for them to see as well?
I don't know if necessarily a precedent was set one way or the other. But again, inform citizens if they want to know the information. We have a capacity crowd here today. Patrick, do you have any insight on that in terms of the agendas and things of that nature?
I, I can't speak to why it's done the way it's done today or how, when that began or what the decision-making process one, process was. I can tell you it's, among local governments, there's probably a fairly even split among those who provide the full agenda packet public on a public portal or online and those that only provide the agenda. I think it's, as much as anything else, it is a workflow decision to be made and probably a, how much capacity or website? You know, how much information can you push out through your website? I don't know enough about that.
In addition to that, the bandwidth that we have in terms of a workforce group. I mean, when you look at our clerk office, it's essentially two people with no support staff. So, I, I don't, there's no precedent been set is what I'm saying.
Well, well, basically it's a PDF file, so it's uploading the same way it is uploading the agenda. So it shouldn't be an extension, it's a PDF file. But I was just wondering, was it something in regards to legalities or so? So now I found out it's not a legal issue that we can just upload the document online. My, my other question was in regards to the youth commission. I know we kinda spoke on this through the commissions, but are we going to make a announcement to the public? 'Cause it's not on the county page in order to go through the county media that we have opened the application for the youth commission. So when would that be done? 'Cause I don't even have a actual flyer. 'Cause I know you told me I could submit that to people, but I don't have a flyer to give them that has all the structure information.
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, last year wasn't like we had flyers or anything?
We did have a flyer last year.
I think you created a flyer, right?
No, I didn't.
But if we did, that's fine. But again, you have the link and you know the children and the citizens who are interested in it. But that's not a problem. We can create a flyer and get it out on our distribution. It's not a problem.
Yeah, 'cause I wasn't voting in as communications. So that's why I was saying that's part of the communications department. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Commissioner Henderson?
I, I just wanted to finish the, I guess, the end of, end of the conversation concerning forever chemicals. And I think when we stopped off on it, I think you were saying there was just-
Commissioner Henderson, hold on one second. Could we keep the mumbling down, please? I have ADD. I have a hard enough time paying attention as it is. Please stop the talking. If I pinpoint you, you're gonna be taken out of here. Thank you. Ms. Henderson, go ahead.
All right, we were talking about the forever chemicals at Williams Street. Now, being a former City of Covington employee for about twenty-four years I knew that Williams Street mostly fed water was sent to the, to the city in Covington. 'Cause I remember at the, one of the meetings that you attended. And so my good friend, Ms. Fleta Baggett and, and Mike Hopkins and et cetera, and some more people, came and was saying, well, don't worry about it, say, you know, it's just a little bit. And, but there shouldn't be any in our water system. And I think we should have a regular update as far as the PFAS that's in our system. It is a carcinogen and it does cause cancer and other stuff. And for it to be in our water system needs, now, I know, you know, I know we're gonna close it down, that's what I'm hoping, Williams Street. But it hasn't, it hasn't been closed down. And there is some PFAS in the, in the water. And the people need to know. And one last thing I just wanna say, that plant been there probably before I was born. And I'm of an age myself, so how many years?
Happy belated birthday, by the way.
Well, thank, thank you, thank you. So how many years have, have, you know, that been in our water system? And at the very least, for the citizens of Newton County, those who may want a test for whether PFAS come out of the bottled water we drank or from the actual water system that we have in Newton County, there should be a test available so that they can kinda monitor their butt system and see how much is in there. 'Cause if you listen to any report or any TV station, information you can dial up on the, on the web, it tells you that it's, it's been out there and nobody been even talking about it. And so, you know, we need to know. People need to know. And as soon as we can get it, that, all of it out of our water system, they need to know that too. And so this is why I had asked for a last meeting, a regular report from the county's management, for the county manager, from the county manager, James was here, James Brown, that we have a record report as far as seeing where we're at, as far as the amount of PFAS, pro-trillions or however, that's in our water system so that people know.
Understood, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Henderson. So let me, let me just say, Mr. Cooper, that a, a monthly report, giving us our average levels and, and progress on decommissioning Williams Street and then our levels relative to maybe a couple of other states. And then, let's, let's move forward with a report like that if we can to, you know, at the request of Commissioner Henderson. Let's see if we can just have something monthly in our packet. Maybe it doesn't have to be addressed every meeting, but it can be in our packet so we can at least see it. Yes, sir.
Excuse me, just wanna, just wanna say something quick. It's in the state of Georgia. It's not in another state, it's here. And a lot of counties are experiencing the same thing and they are talking about it, getting reports on it. So the citizens, well, no, that's all.
Thank you. All right, that moves us to item number seven. We have no unfinished business. This, item number eight is the consent agenda. Minus items that we, eight B, which is now nine A, and item eight D, which is now item nine B. So with that, I seek a motion to approve the consent agenda. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Five zero. Thank you. All right, that takes us to nine A. I'm sorry, I don't have my glasses, number nine. Discussion of Newton County Miracle League appropriation. If we, we have Mr. Mike Cockens here tonight, if he would, please. Say something, Mike. We're all looking forward to this event, October fourth through the sixth, hosting pretty much the world, right, in Covington, Georgia. So in terms of the Miracle League and, and what those athletes mean to us, our community, our state and our world, right? So with that, I'll let you, I'll let you take it over.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Commissioners, thank you for allowing me to come here and share with you about the event coming up in forty-five days. And so getting real close here to being here, let's see. Okay, so it is gonna be at our field here and that was built in 2015, thanks to the commission. You know, over at City Pond Park, we're real excited to host. We're the fifth city to host this. There's been at Houston, Finley, Ohio, Sioux City, Iowa, and places like that. West Palm Beach last year. Great, great events. And so, right here. So Friday night, what we're gonna do, we've been working with the city of Covington and we're gonna close off the square at six thirty. Shut it down completely, bring the athletes in that arrived that afternoon, come in with their families. They allowed up to four family members to come with them. So we'll have a little over six hundred athletes and family coming into us. We're gonna have a parade, we're gonna have street vendors, video games, live band, dinner, food trucks, and also first ever Newton County drone show. No fireworks because of special needs and some of the issues there with sound issues. And so we're really gonna put on a great show. And what we really need is for the community to come out. Because the one things these athletes like, what all athletes like, is attention. And they like, they like to be loved on. And so we want to show our community spirit here in Covington and Newton County to come out and support this event from six thirty to about nine thirty on Friday night. I do know that this, the start of fall break and also Georgia plays Auburn the next day, Saturday, in Athens. So, but you know, if you really wanna come see a special event, come see us here. Come out and join us. Saturday is a full day of playing games. And so we've got five games listed, they play two innings. This is where it's really important for everybody to come out. And I would invite any and everybody here. We get a lot of requests for volunteers. We've got a lot of things lined up, got some key people in those positions. But people keep asking, what can they do? Come watch a ball game. Come cheer these athletes on. That is really important and it's what we really need to do. With everything going on in the fall, we really would like to see people turn out for the games at City Pond Park. Show your support. You know, we've had some donations, volunteer, attend the games again, just what I've gone over here. So here's the list, it's a little blurry, sorry about that. But we've had thirty-four industries and businesses in Newton County and outside, including the Atlanta Braves sponsor this event. This is an expensive event. Once the district gets the athletes here, we put them up in hotels, we feed them and their families for the weekend. We have a big awards banquet on Saturday night gala. And we've got all this going on locally using local people. So we tried to keep it here and stimulate the economy. We'll have a lot of people coming in from all over the state to see their families and their children play ball. So we're really looking forward to that. So right now, we're probably, you know, somewhere about eighty percent on donations that we need. We'd like a little bit more left in order to fully fund this event. And, but right now, almost all of these are businesses and industry. And so we haven't been asked, our local municipality, city of Covington did participate in this. So we just really would like to see what we could do here, right here at the very end, if the county could help us a little bit for that.
Thank you, Mike. I know, just to reiterate what Mike said, these, these athletes, they're not looking for any sympathy. They're looking for your love and your cheers and your support. And I know the city of Covington has stepped up in a big way to help. And I'd like to see the board do the same thing, if we could. Commissioner Cal, would you like to talk?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. The city of Covington, my understanding is appropriated twenty-five thousand dollars for this.
That's correct.
And this is our program. I mean, we own the Miracle League field, it's our recreation's responsibility.
Yes, sir.
I think our contribution ought to be more. So I would ask that the board consider putting fifty thousand dollars toward this.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Could you please state that motion again?
I'm sorry, I'd like to make a motion to appropriate fifty thousand dollars to the Miracle League All-Star baseball game.
Thank you. I'll second that emotion, I'll second that, that motion, not emotion, but I'll second that motion. And now we're open for discussion. Mr. Mr. Henderson?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. So I, I guess what about what I was, I was, I was hoping that when you came, you would tell us the amount of money that you actually, whatever that amount was that you asked from the board, rather than just give the amount that may be not enough.
Well, right now, we've, we're about eighty thousand uncollected. So out of a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar budget. So we're still, we're still going after these uncommitteds that have promised money to us and we haven't gotten it yet.
Thank you. So I guess the next person is, is we need to ask, where would the money come from? You know, we all got to, you know, when you fund something, where would it come from? So where would the fifty thousand dollars come from? Would it come out of general fund, would it come out of?
This was not part of the motion, but my suggestion would be we use that, take it from the fund balance, fifty thousand dollars from the fund balance. It's under the general, general fund. Brittany, could you step, could you come over for one second, please? So, so if we wanna, if, if we wanna follow through with this motion, if we wanna follow through with this motion, and we wanna do fifty thousand dollars for the Miracle League tournament, that, I, I do see now on item number nine, it says general fund. So that money is adequately there, correct?
My suggestion would be, I, do you have a question? Okay. My suggestion would be, I don't have the number in front of me 'cause I was not prepared for this, but I do believe that we probably have enough in our contingency and the FY twenty-five budget to pull it from there. But I can verify that for y'all.
Okay. Commissioner Sanders?
This is a hard one for me, 'cause everybody know I love the kids and everything. Because when we spoke about using funds out of the contingency plan, when we were doing the budget for the taxes, there was an excuse in regards to how we're supposed to use it. So I just wanna be fair across the board, 'cause I know we have taxpayers that are listening to us like, y'all didn't use that money, help us with our taxes. So I just want to make sure that we are sure that it's coming out of this pot. I think you say you're a little bit unsure and it's fair to you to make sure you're more prepared. So do, we need to give her time? 'Cause I don't know, I know it's in October and I know they have a timeframe, but do we need to give you some time to make sure before we make a, a vote on where it's coming from?
Okay, can I clarify something real quick? So there's fund balance and then there's contingency.
Okay.
So in the contingency in the budget, you have a line item called reserve for fiscal year changes.
Right, okay.
So that is specifically for that fiscal year. Fund balance is something that's gonna roll year to year. And I believe, and this is just me going off the top of my head, so please don't quote me on this, I think we did a hundred and fifty thousand in contingency this year, so we could pull it from that line item.
Now, placing that one fifty in contingency, which is normally a Plan A, Plan B, for those who are probably asking that question, was that money set aside for particular things or just for anything that we have coming up?
Anything that comes up that we did not expect when we were going through the budget process.
Okay, thank you.
And I will say, anybody who's sat with me in this horseshoe for the last almost eight years knows that I do not, I, I do not try to sling fifty grand around on a whim. I think it's very important, on, on the, on the, on the financial side, there's gonna be a substantial investment in our community anyway with all the families coming here. So I, I think our net would not be fifty thousand, negative fifty thousand dollars by any stretch of the imagination for the county. But-
but, um, I think it's a worthwhile cause, and if, uh, it, if, now, we're on a tight timeframe, so when is our next meeting? Okay, but, uh, if, if Brittany's comfortable, I'm comfortable, so we have a motion and a second. Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you, and that would be too long, cause I too agree that we need to do something, um, uh, for the kids, who, uh, who needs help. And, uh, and there's a lot of kids in Newton County need help, and I'm glad that, that we do have some contingency funding. And, um, and I'm, I'm hoping that the board will look at some of the other items that may be brought to this board as far as trying to help, uh, kids in our community too as well.
Thank you, all in favor? All opposed, that's five-zero, thank you, Mike.
Wow, thank you all so much, can I, can I add one thing?
Yes, sir, you can.
I wanna step out of bounds here, Mr. Henderson, I, I, the most important thing I forgot is we have anywhere from eighty to a hundred athletes in the, in the spring and the fall play. They're gonna be invited to this with their families on Friday, and provided food, and part of the whole process, the All-Star process. And then also, when the athletes that come in from all across the country on Saturday, on Sunday afternoon, we're gonna play ball with our athletes and love on them, and treat them as the All-Stars that they are. So this money is going to fund ice creams, slushies, all kinda stuff for them too, so they're included. And so, uh, just, uh, we're not leaving anybody out.
And you're right, Mike, and, cause I served on the Rick Board for twenty, almost twenty-four years, before it was changed over to the Board of Commissioners, and I know how much good it does in, in the community.
Yes, sir.
Uh, and, thank y'all, I'm, I'm, we're, we're blown away, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike, uh, I would like to thank all these commissioners too, thank you very much for stepping up, that's, uh, I, I'll say this was a program or a, an effort that was very, uh, dear to my dad's heart, so, thank you very much. All right. The next item on our agenda is now item nine A, I believe. Uh, Facilities Department requests approval of amendment to change order number three to professional services agreement for Carol Smith DBA Five Fields Lawn Care, to decrease the maximum amount, to decrease the maximum annual contract cost of a hundred-and-thirty-two thousand, one-hundred-and-fifty-seven dollars and fifty-six cents to one-hundred-and-thirty thousand, three-hundred-and-twenty-seven dollars and fifty-six cents.
Jason's out, so I'll cover it, and basically what happened, uh, Jennifer McCall, who works with Gerard and Davis, worked with Randy on the contract, and they realized that it was a calculation error. So we're bringing it to the board, uh, to correct that, and in actuality, there's a cost savings here for us.
So, in, in, in actuality, we're, we're netting almost eighteen hundred bucks back?
Correct.
All right, all right, Mr. Commissioner Sanders?
I just have a question in regards, since I see, I saw when I read the whole, um, I guess, resolution. It had, uh, we pay like eleven thousand a month for the maintenance, uh, so is there like a list of where they're going per month to cut the grass? And I'm asking that for a reason, especially on the western side and part of the northern side of the area. It's not getting cut to a certain extent, so I would love to know what's their schedule or where they're cutting at? And, 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 uh, one of the residents, I get called all the time, is that they're not cutting the guardrails, they're leaving the edges. They're not cutting it completely to make it neat, so I would love to know where they are cutting all this, what's the list of items that they're cutting, or areas that they're cutting?
So, great question, Madam Commissioner, just like you had those questions with Public Works, and we provided you those reports, I'll get with Jason to see if we can put your report together.
Thank you.
Uh, yes, sir, Commissioner Mason?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, um, I know I have actually posed that question previously to, um, our Public Works Director, Chris Malcolm, uh, a couple different times during, um, budget, um, hearings. Um, and so, a couple times during those budget hearings, um, I do recall him stating, of course, there was some, uh, time with staffing and things of that nature, and so, it was challenging for him to actually provide us with an actual list. Um, but I do believe that would be great if we could have something like that. Um, I do know that, um, what I have begin to do, since we don't have a list, um, just to encourage our residents, um, to actually uti- utilize Notify Newton, um, so they can pull that app out. You know, they can, uh, say, hey, this is an area that needs to be addressed, uh, or cut or serviced. Um, and then, once they submit that report through Notify Newton, it goes directly to the Public Works Department. Uh, it now gets on their list of, of attention, where they can actually address that concern as well. So, since we haven't been able to be successfully with having a list, and I know I've asked for it at least twice, um, because, uh, Chris Malcolm basically stated that it's challenging to get a list. Um, I just encourage our residents, uh, if possible, just utilize Notify Newton, um, which is, um, a way for our residents, anything that goes on in our community that needs to be addressed, they can use that app, and it goes directly to the department that needs to address it, and then they can address it immediately. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Vice, any more comments? At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve item number nine A. We have a motion? And Commissioner Cowan wants a second, any more discussion? All in favor? All opposed, that's five-zero. Thank you, we'll move on to item nine B. Uh, Parks and Recreation, Mr. Jeff Pryne, I think's got a, something to say about this.
Good evening, uh, as part of the, uh, as everybody knows, uh, Spring Hill Park is now in operation, and as part of any kind of new park, there's a shakedown period, where we're learning about things that we need to kinda tweak. This is an opportunity where we wanna change the security system of the gate, that will give them a system that will allow them to lock it remotely, and open it remotely as well. And so, this is a change order to some built, builders, to help us to put in the, the power, which will be solar, um, and the control mechanisms, and the, um, uh, that will allow them to basically open and shut this on a regular basis and keep the park secure when it's not in operation.
Thank you, Jeff, any questions for Jeff? I'll entertain a motion. I'll make that motion, need a second.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Henderson? Any more discussion, Commissioner Henderson?
A question that I have, did, or was, did we, did you submit the price of, of what the gate would cost?
It's, it's nineteen thousand dollars.
Okay, nineteen thousand dollars, and one other question, that, um, that I wanted to estimate to, who would be the person would have, I, I, I like to think in terms of a key, but to enter it back and forth, or the combination of whatever it may take to get there, would it be the Rick Department, or would it be someone from the community?
It's basically be under control of the Parks and Rick Department, and they can remote in off their phones, and, uh, or off their secure computers, and open and shut it.
Okay, well, one, one last question, it's kinda related, but not related, but it's, it's for us, Spring Hill, this community center. Um, I've been getting some, uh, constituents, how would they, uh, lease the building, the community center itself?
I'll, I'll let Dewayne come answer that question.
So Commissioner, we're doing that like our, just like Turner Lake, they just call the office, and whatever date, you know, naturally they want, we'll check and make sure it's available. And, um, so, and right now, as far as like the gate goes, um, Ed Noor Martin lives right there at the park, and he works part-time with us. So right now, seven days a week, he's going over and locking the gates, so, um, this will help with that part. So he's not tied up every night having to lock gates, but, uh, so they can call the office on the pavilion, and also the community center also.
Uh, one last question, what's the cost to lease the building?
It's, uh, three hundred dollars, and that's from eight in the morning till nine at night, it's a two-fifty deposit, but they get the deposit back, um, you know, once everything's cleaned, and everything, so they get that back.
That, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second, any more discussion? All in favor? All opposed, that's five-zero. Thank you, Jeff, thank you. All right, item number ten, uh, we'll call Ms. Brittany back up here.
Thank you, so tonight, there will be a year-end FY twenty-twenty-four budget amendment that is in your packets. It looks like this, um, but there is a lot of line items on here with probably a lot of numbers y'all do not know. So I have, um, prepared a little slideshow here with a summary of essentially what this budget amendment is doing. So, in the FY twenty-five budget process, we had roughly twelve million dollars of capital requests. We were not able to fund any of those in the FY twenty-five budget, so this year-end budget amendment is attempting to fund around seven million dollars in requests for capital. So, a majority of this amendment, like I said, is to address capital needs county-wide. So our, the first item is gonna be one million ninety-five thousand dollars for vehicles for various departments within the county. Three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for public works equipment, such as tractors, boom mowers, things like that. Forty-five thousand dollars for forklift for the centralized storage facility, that is a SPOSS project. There's also sixty-five hundred dollars for a new sound system for courtroom B, um, for the probate court. Two million dollars to address capital needs within the Sheriff's Department. Seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a potential, um, addition to the fire headquarters. There's also one point five million to address equipment and building improvements for the fire department. Seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to replace computers county-wide. Three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in additional funds needed for the Senior Service Enrichment Center for the SPOSS, the twenty-three SPOSS project, and then also, fifty thousand dollars in additional funds needed for furniture for the admin building SPOSS projects. Along with the capital requests, there's also a few departments that were over budget in FY twenty-four, so we need to address those as well. So we need to address three hundred thousand dollars in the public works budget, and majority of that comes from the SPOSS reimbursement that was budgeted, that we took out in the FY twenty-five budget, because they were having such a problem with a limited SPOSS fund, so that's where majority of that number is. There's also gonna be seventy-five thousand dollars in fleet's budget, and most of that comes from just vehicles that were wrecked that needed to be repaired, so we did get revenues in to offset that seventy-five thousand. There's also gonna be thirty-five thousand dollars for fire, and mainly, that's in overtime. Um, human resources was twenty thousand over budget, and that's mainly due to wellness fund reimbursement. We close our year out in the next ten days, we do not believe that we're gonna get the wellness fund reimbursements within the ten days, so when we do finally get that, it'll have to go in twenty-five. And then the other is the streetlight budget, which is twenty-eight thousand over, but that's just off, that is also offset by revenue. So on the next slide, we're gonna review how we're gonna make these projects happen. So it's a mixture of increase in revenues, and then also savings and expenditures. So in our revenue line items, we're gonna realize four point seven million dollars in overage that we got more than what we had budgeted for. So that is gonna come from three hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars in penalty and interest, one point five million in interest income, two hundred and fifty thousand, four sixty in sale of assets, one million, three hundred, two dollars, nine hundred and two dollars, um, that is gonna be from intergovernmental, governmental revenues, and that's the JDA disbursements that we got, um, three, thirty-five thousand dollars in insurance premium tax, forty-seven thousand, eight hundred and thirty-eight dollars in reimbursement and damaged property, and then twenty-eight thousand in special assessments from the streetlights. And the savings that were realized, I just broke these down in categories, cause these cover so many different departments within the county. So we had salary savings of one million, four hundred and eight thousand dollars. Our contracted services lines totaled to seven hundred and, seven hundred and seventy-seven thousand. Our supply lines totaled two hundred and five thousand, and our, just other various miscellaneous line items were two hundred and fifteen thousand. And then essentially, what this budget amendment does, is it takes all these revenues and these, um, savings and expenditures, and then we move them over to a line item called transfer out to capital funds, and this will be transferred into our capital improvement fund. Our capital improvement fund is a multi-year fund, so those funds do roll from year to year. I know that was a lot, so are there any questions?
Commissioner Sanders?
I just wanna, I'm sorry, just, just of clarity, or just to break it down, cause we have a lot of numbers, and I, I understand them. So, how much will the budget be increased by?
Um, let's see, the six point eight million dollars plus the four hundred and fifty-eight, so around seven point two, seven point three million.
Cause we just increased by seven million in the budget, we just voted on in, was that June, when did we just vote, June?
Keep in mind, this is FY twenty-four, so this, that was the FY twenty-five budget, this is a year-end budget amendment for twenty-four. So this is utilizing line items that we had savings in, that departments didn't utilize, as well as revenues that came in higher than what we originally had budgeted for.
So what would be our county budget for this fiscal year?
Well, this is gonna be FY twenty-four, so the budget was roughly ninety-two million, so this'll put us right around, what, ninety-seven, ninety-eight million?
And this is finishing out FY twenty-four, not the one we just voted on?
Yes.
So that means the budget from last year is about to be increased by seven, seven million dollars?
Correct.
I'm sorry, that's all I have.
Any other questions, or comments? Commissioner Henderson?
Uh, does, does lost come into play at, at any?
Um, the, are you talking about like loss, like sales tax collections? Yes, so that was, um, the line item here, where we had lost collections, and it was, I think, roughly, let me see, hold on one second. Yes, that one had additional one point two million dollars in that, that we did not budget for, so that is part of this as well.
Okay. Commissioner Mason?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair, so Brittany, if I understand you correctly, what you're saying is basically, uh, in our FY twenty-four, we basically had an overage in that budget, budget, what we didn't account for. So we thought it was a certain amount, but we actually brought in more than we had projected or anticipated.
Correct.
So now, we're able to use the overage funds to help, uh, this ba- this budget transfer to address these concerns. Now, what happens, um, say for example, in FY twenty-four, we have those overages, they're just sitting there. What happens to those monies if we don't utilize them in some way?
So whatever is not utilized, whether it's an increase in revenue or expenditure savings, it would roll into fund balance.
So, with that being said, it would be great, because we have a healthy fund balance. It would be great to now go ahead and address these concerns that we have, which will actually enhance our community, is that accurate?
Yeah, so essentially, if this budget amendment was not approved tonight, then this money would run and roll into fund balance.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair.
You're welcome, I think it's fair to say, right, and I think you said it at the beginning with Brittany, that we, we had no capital, capital was not addressed in our, in the FY twenty-four budget, correct?
FY twenty-five budget.
FY twenty-five budget, so, so now we have, we have some of those needs addressed. The department heads had these, these requests for capital, right, and we, we didn't budget for them, so, so now we've got the, the, the surplus that we can use to, from twenty-twenty-four, all right? Um, oh, Commissioner Sanders?
One question, and you can answer that for me, why wasn't it budgeted in FY twenty-five? Why, cause I noticed we didn't do that in twenty-four initially as well, so why isn't capital put into the budget?
Um, I mean, it's always our intention to put capital in the budget, but then, once we get, going through the budget process, and we kinda see where, where the commissioners are wanting the mileage rate, it's just, usually, capital's the first thing that gets cut, because it's, um, it's a non-essential item.
Okay, thank you.
Any more discussion? I'll entertain them, we've already got a motion and a second, correct? No, we do, we don't? I'll entertain a motion at this time. Commissioner Henderson, Commissioner Mason, any more, uh, discussion? All in favor? All opposed? It's five zero. All right. Item number eleven, I will turn that over to our county attorney.
Good evening, Mr. Vice Chair and Board. As you are all aware, um, soon after the governor suspended Marcello Baines from the position of chairman of the board of commissioners, we received a request from Mr. Baines seeking the county to pay the defense costs associated with the pending criminal action. Georgia law has a provision that authorizes the county governing authority, which is you, to approve the payment of defense costs for criminal cases brought against a member of the governing authority or any other elected or appointed official when those criminal charges arise from or relate in any way to their duty as a member of the governing authority. The only person, the only group that can answer that question is, is this board. Um, neither myself nor Mr. Cooper have the authority to answer the question. The ca, the question must be presented to this board for consideration. And the question is, does the board of commissioners desire for the county to fund defense costs of Mr. Baines in defending the pending criminal case against him? That's the request before you. I know there's some business questions to be asked, how much, uh, to whom? We, we don't know. I, I can tell you that none of that information was provided to us. Uh, I, I would not begin to guess, uh, what it would cost to defend a federal criminal case like this. I, I would estimate, I'll give you a really broad estimate. Um, more than seventy-five thousand dollars, less than two hundred thousand dollars? If you're looking for a number, probably, probably in that range. Yep. So, we don't know what, how much is being requested or how much is being sought at this time. Um, and it's left to you. Georgia law authorizes three answers to this question. Uh, really four answers to this question. Uh, Georgia law authorizes you to say, no, there is no legal obligation on your part to pay these costs. Uh, Georgia law would authorize you to agree to pay some, if not, but not all of those expenses. Georgia law would authorize you to pay all of the expenses. And Georgia law would auth, also authorize you to defer a decision until the case is over. And in the event of a not guilty verdict or a dismissal of the charges, Georgia law would authorize you to reimburse a portion or all of those fees. So those are the options you have today. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you. Um, you know, in the, um, uh, the memo that you, I think, gave to all of us last, last week, and it, and it made reference to, um, I think, former chair Kathy Morgan about some, um, and I was on the board at particular time, about, uh, some road, uh, over in District Four that she paid without the approval of the commission. And it went to the grand jury, and I think, I don't remember us voting to give her the attorney fee money, but nevertheless, it got paid. The second we referenced was myself in the two thousand sixteen forensic audit. There was an audit that was broad and public about myself in Nelson Heights Community Center. And I remember going back and asking the questions that were, how did we go from a half a million dollars that were posed by then chairman Keith Ellis, a half a million dollars that we're looking for, uh, for, um, it was, um, impact fees and, and SPOS? How did we go from trying to locate the half a million dollars to me? And it was about, what happened to the money? And over the years, I found out what happened to it. And what happened to it was that it was about six million dollars and that it was used to pay for capital improvements. And under particular times in law, you had to separate those two funds. But I guess I was the best escape goat because all the attention was made on, on myself and Nelson Heights. And I remember a few years afterward, and I really don't think this stuff, it's all old stuff. Uh, a few years afterward, I remember the, um, um, Brittany, we were talking. Lord Kerr was the county manager. And he said, we just paid back all the, um, uh, the, um, impact fee money that had been used for capital improvements. And I said, what? I said, where we get, I said, who gave authorization? And I know they found who gave authorization, but it later was kind of thrown on, um, one of the former county commissioners who had passed. And my own part was, then was, we know how it, the board need to know how it was done so that in the future, it wouldn't happen again. But anyway, getting back to me in the forensic audit, he was sealed on me. And it cost the county about two hundred and forty thousand dollars. And no part, no part did anybody ever say that wants to give me some kind of attorney at all. But the good news was, and it's one of them, I bought this book right here. That's a man that sits up high and look down low and know what our needs are. And no agency, what, was, when it was the grand jury, or when it was the GBI's, or when it was the FBI, and all it went through, it taken about three years, four years, went through it and sent it back. And when it was finally unsealed, I, I couldn't figure out why the county commissioners that I served on the board would seal something, and I understood the reason why they sealed it. Because he was so stupid. Three rolls of toilet paper and some broccoli. And they wouldn't send me the chain game for that. And they gave Gerard and Davis. Uh, and, uh, Davis saw you all that money to do nothing. And then one, one less thing concerning that forensic audit was for about a year, they rode past my house over in the hood, and there were white vans still sitting in the front yard to see had it been moved, it didn't even belong to the county, and they were paying for, for that. So, that's why I'm always trying to figure out how our money's being spent. And we need to know because that was just money they throwed away. How much more good could it have done? That two hundred and fifty thousand dollars they were spending in a neighborhood to help kids, or pay more rec balls, whatever the case may be, crime prevention or whatever. They did that. But I said all that to say this, nobody ever paid nothing. Not that I asked the taxpayer to give me one cent. And I don't know why they sent that, that, that lie to the rest of us comm, uh, commissioners, saying like they gave me something. It was, it, they weren't trying to give me anything. Only thing they were trying to do with taxpayers' money, give me some time in jail for nothing. So, uh, but I forgave them because I'm a man of God. I said I've been a deacon for thirty years, I forgive them and move right on. But that doesn't stop. You know, the last time, was it about a year ago they said that I leased out Nelson Heights? You weren't supposed to lease it out? And guess what we just said a few minutes ago? We leased out the new building over, over there, uh, Spring Hill Park. So this tells you a whole lot about what's going on. If somebody, I may dislike you or what you say or your politics, but I know we'll try to do something real bad to you for no reason at all. So I said all that just to say this. If I could go through what I went through, the grand jury, the GBI's, the FBI's, and come back and not with yours, then I think anybody can go through it. But you got to have did nothing wrong. And the faith that I held on to, that I believe in our justice system, that if I did something wrong and I need to go jail, but I did nothing, leave me alone. Thank you.
Commissioner Sanders.
Um, I did have a few questions, but I'm gonna make a statement as was just released in the paper, uh, from a case that Chairman Baines and Ms. Lindsay is the attorney on this case in regards to defamation of character because I released a surveillance tape that I did open records from the county. Um, the information was sent to the county. I had to seek out private attorney. Not once did the county offer to pay my legal fees because I, I, this defamation of character lawsuit came in the capacity of being a commissioner. It was ignored. Nobody said nothing, nobody did anything. I had to do it on my own. And so, this is where I stand. I understand that they paid for this in the past. I'm not sure what of all the crimes, I, I did hear about Ms. Morgan and the crimes that happened during that time and what she might have possibly was, I don't think she was indicted. Um, but the county didn't reach out on my behalf, and this was done in my capacity, not at my consent. The chairman did that. Nothing was put into effect, neither did our legal assistants, our attorney, reach out because my attorney reached out to y'all. So, I had to do it on my own. Thank you.
Any other comments? All right. At this time, I will entertain a motion. Well, uh, counsel, um, how should have, you, you offered, what, three to four options, right?
A motion to approve the payment of defense costs, a motion to deny the payment of defense costs, or a motion to defer consideration until the criminal case has been disposed. I think those would be the three reasonable options.
All right. Commissioners, you have one of three options to select from for a motion. I'll entertain that motion now. Commissioner Henderson.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. You know, these, these are kind of hard times, and I, I understand that, that money is tight.
Commissioner Henderson, let's wait, we have a, a mo, a second, and then we'll go into, I'll let you.
I understand, can I, can I do my motion? I, I understand, you know, kind of where your heart may be at, but I want just, if I could, just.
But you're gonna make the motion?
You can make a motion, just make the motion if I may. And I don't think there's no time limit on me making a motion.
Okay.
Okay, now, I understand these are hard times. And everybody need help. It's also my understanding and constituents said that there was a, um, a public attorney that was, in fact, I had the paperwork, I think it's still somewhere at home, I think Patrick probably got it too as well. And there was a public attorney that was, um, given to him by, uh, I guess, the federal government. And so, I think at the very least, if we have to go with sometimes. And I do, I had to, I had to lean on myself or lean on trusted and go out for myself. And so we all are men of faith. And I believe in him. So I, I said all that to say this, I make a motion to deny.
We have a motion to deny on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion to deny and a, a, a motion, a second on the floor. Any more discussion? All in favor of denial? All opposed? For the one to deny.
Commissioner Cowan. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I'm assuming that the motion to deny is gonna be not pay any legal fees, not even a reimbursement. Is that correct?
That's the motion today. Now, there's nothing that prevents the board in six months or nine months, if the case is disposed of, to reimburse some fees.
So we can revisit this if, if he is acquitted.
If the case is disposed of in his favor, you, you would be permitted to revisit it, yes.
Okay, so if he's acquitted, case is dismissed or whatever, or there's no finding of wrongdoing or anything like that, then we can bring it back and ask for a reimbursement to him for the attorney fees that he's expended. Is that correct?
Georgia law does authorize that, yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you, counselor. Uh, we'll move on to item number, I believe we're gonna call it twelve, but we're gonna combine twelve through, I think we said twelve through fifteen, am I correct?
That's correct.
If you would state for us, please, counsel.
This would be a resolution to suspend Marcello Baines from the board of the Newton County Industrial Development Authority, the Joint Development Authority of Jasper, Morgan, Newton, and Walton Counties, the Newton County Solid Waste Management Authority, and Viewpoint Health pending the final disposition of the criminal case. To give you a little background, as you are all aware, the governor has suspended Mr. Baines from the office of chair. Georgia law has a similar provision that allows the governing authority to suspend an indicted official from any position that it appointed it to. This board appointed Mr. Baines to those four boards that I just mentioned. It is within your authority now to suspend him from those four boards during the pendency of this pending action. When the ga, when the case ends, if he is acquitted, found not guilty, by operation of law, he will return both to his position as chair and to his position on, on the board of each one of those. If he is found guilty, by operation of law, he will be removed permanently. So what this does is it matches what the governor has done by suspending him temporarily, pending the outcome of the case, from those four boards.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion. You got a question, Commissioner Henderson, go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, would Gaither's plantation be included too as well up until he's found innocent or guilty?
No, and here's why. His, the, the chairman's authority over Gaither's plantation is a function of the chair. He is no longer the chair, he has no authority over Gaither's, period. So Gaither's reports to the chairman of the board of commissioners. He is, Mr. Baines is not today the chairman of board of commissioners. So Ga, the, the staff at Gaither's plantation will answer to either the vice chair or when a, when a new chair is appointed. If the governor appoints a new chair to serve in a temporary time, he will be supervising it. There is no board to remove him from with respect to Gaithers.
Well, the, the, the follow-up question is this, uh, when we created the, um, vice chair, I think he was motioned by Commissioner Mark Ewen and seconded by myself. It wasn't to set up to run anything, it was just to sit in uh, for the chair in the event of his absence of a short period of time. It wasn't set up for months. It was set up, you know, maybe for a meeting or two, similar to, I think, what most of us on the ground this board have done. And so I think is, if, if we're gonna, uh, use the vice chair to conduct all the meetings and stuff, then he probably need to be re-talked about around this particular board because it was not given that power, uh, to do what you, what, what I think we are kind of gonna move to it, hit to do.
I, I don't disagree with that at all. Our hope is that the governor will step in and do what, what he's require, what he's authorized to do, which is to appoint a new chairman. That, that authority rests with the governor. If he doesn't do it, then we're gonna have to figure out a way to limp along. We, we don't have any authority within this room to appoint a new chair. We are, we are left with the governor making an appointment or this board deciding upon itself how you're gonna deal with the role. I don't, I don't mind saying, and I expect Mr. Edwards is about to say, he doesn't want to do it. He doesn't want to continue in this role any, any longer than absolutely necessary.
I'll, I'll, I'll just add that, um, I check the governor's executive order website every thirty minutes, even while I'm sleeping, so. So, uh, additionally, um, I, I, I put as much pressure on that, on the governor's office as through the people I know, which is not very many. Um, and, and the, I thought we would have something by now, but we don't. So we'll continue to limp, and I do mean limp along. So, um, uh, I do not want to sit here, I want to sit right there. So, uh, with that, um, do we have a mo, we don't have a motion yet, do we?
No.
So I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the resolution of the board of commissioners of Newton County, Georgia, Georgia, excuse me, suspending Marcello Baines from the boards of Newton County Industrial Development Authority, the board of the Newton County Solid Waste Management Authority, the board of Viewpoint Health, and the board of the Joint Development Authority of Jasper, Morgan, Newton, and Walton Counties.
We have a motion, do I have a second?
Sir.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Commissioner Henderson.
Well, just let me say this, so I, so I'll be clear in front, uh, for, for the people who may hear me, what I, what we said, is that if former, uh, chairman Baines is found innocent, then all, come back up and, and conduct the meetings or whatever during this, this, um, elected time. But until then, we, uh, we're trying to move in the direction of force, trying to move this board along, conduct meetings as best we can, and up until somebody's, uh, he's brought back or we, or have to vote somebody in.
That's correct.
Commissioner Sanders.
I just have a quick question. Who will, and I know we kind of talked about this vaguely, but who will be appointed? And as I mentioned, it doesn't have to be a commissioner, it doesn't have to be the chair on some of these boards. It could be any elected official based on the bylaws. So is our next step, our next meeting, our this meeting to appoint somebody in the meantime until the governor moves forward? Because at the point, at this point, that means there'd be no representation on some of these boards. On some of these boards, I think he represents Newton County. So, there would be no representation from Newton, so what will be doing in the meantime?
Right, so that'll be up to the board. Uh, the act, the, whatever step you take next will be up to the board. We didn't include the appointment of the new persons in this resolution just 'cause it didn't appear that the board was ready for that. I would urge you to collectively, individually, start thinking about that. I do think there is some wisdom in waiting to see if a new chair is appointed. Um, I, I, but also, you have to balance that out against exactly the point you made. How long do you want to go with that chair empty in each one of those meetings? So, I, I think that's a, that's a tough, that's a balancing act. Whatever this board elects to do, we'll, we'll make it work.
Let, let me just add too, uh, and I think you guys have probably noticed over the last couple of meetings that we're trying to, we're trying to eat the apple one bite at a time, right? Um, but you cannot ignore the fact that we have a sense of urgency on some of these boards, so that we a prior, a prioritization process, and then we have to move forward with some appointments. Hopefully, that's with the new chairman in the next meeting, but, or interim chairman in the next meeting, but, uh, maybe the next meeting, I don't know. But I, I, I do understand a sense of urgency. The boards have reached, some of those boards have reached out to me, and I, I, you know, I've explained to them that, uh, just what I said, you know, we're trying to eat this apple a little at a time, we, we don't want to have any knee-jerk, but we're trying to, we're trying to not stall, but we're also trying to give the governor his ample time. But at some point, we, we can't give him any more time, and we, we'll have to move forward. So, that's kind of where we are, no excuses. The sense of urgency is there, there'll be a prioritize, prioritization process, and we'll move forward with, with, no matter what the governor does, so. Any other questions? We have a motion and a second, right? All right, any more discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Pass is five zero. All right, I believe that moves us to citizen comments, item number sixteen. Citizens have three minutes to comment. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, it's Carolyn Woodward again, from Broadleaf Subdivision, District Three. As far as the reappointment, we are all living in terrible economic times. Those of us that are retired and only get paid maybe twenty or thirty thousand dollars a year, which is probably most of the folks that, uh, pay y'all salaries, we want you to tighten up your belt too. There is no reason why we even need a chairman position. I'm sorry. And if you think that Kemp is gonna put in Ellis when he didn't even get the position, we're gonna fight on that one too, okay? And let's go back to transparency, because I've been in front of this board for years. I know who you know, I know you know who I am, and I've lost my temper multiple times, and I apologize for that. But I get tired of not being heard. I get so tired. I get so tired of listening to blathering on, y'all get to jump around on agenda items. You had already answered his question about doing the, the, um, the water testing, but we gotta sit here and listen to more of that droning on, and it's almost ten o'clock, and it's a school night, okay? So, um, and then also, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars per mile to resurface roadways? I'm in the wrong business, y'all. I want you to look at that, and I also want to know how you came up with the roads that got fixed. Because I'm seeing a lot of residential communities out here. My subdivision hasn't been paved since I've been in here, and it's all cracked up, and we pay a lot of taxes, okay? I'm not saying that we deserve better treatment, I'm just saying, we pay a lot of taxes, okay? And I am tired of seeing you guys sit up here and write a check here and write a check there, when it's my money you're paying. And then you have a budget that you have a carryover of millions of dollars? Holy crap, how do you do a budget? You need some finance education, because that's not how you run a budget. You don't just put money in a slush fund and say, I'll use it later. Because that's how y'all get busted. That's how you get federally indicted, okay? And as far as paying attorney's fees, I think that if Mr., uh, if the chairman is, is, is exonerated, yes, we do owe him a thing, but if any one of you does a criminal act wearing your, your commissioner's cap, and it's based on your own poor choices and your own foul cronyism, it's on you, okay? So, if we find out that he's implicated, or any of y'all are implicated, based on your own personal actions, it should not come out of my pocket, it should come out of yours, because that's what we pay you for, okay? As far as putting it on the website, I've asked you since the very beginning, I've told you that that has got plenty of bandwidth. I talked about transparency when I was up here the very first time. It doesn't take much for you to put an agenda out there, everything you look at, I should be able to see, and ahead of time. I all should, should, should see printed minutes. So, when I go back and search for something that I've repeatedly asked for, and asked for, and asked for, and y'all don't even put it on the agenda, you don't even call me back. You don't, I've, I've copied every one of you in, and you just ignore me because you think I'm rude, or that I don't deserve to be here. Well, you know what, I'm a professional woman, I retired after thirty years, and I didn't behave the way any of y'all did, okay? Because I wouldn't have kept a job. If, if the chairman had done what he had done, working for any other major company, he would have been fired on the spot.
Thank you.
Marie Million, Neely Manor. I just wanted to say that, um, we were asked to pay for legal fees, and we're not looking for an admission of guilt or innocence from Chairman Baines, but regardless, there's been no apology to the citizens, because this is what shame upon our county. It just makes us look really foolish, like, that there's this much, like, mismanagement. So, that's one point I wanted to just make, because I was waiting for something to be said as far as an apology. Next thing, um, we have been waiting in District Three for a park, and tonight, we discussed how important children are to our community. It would be good to have a park in that community. Um, I know that in the past, monk properties has been looked at, and I'm wondering why we can't revisit that again, because it would be helpful, because District Three, as all of you know, is the most populous district, therefore, there are a lot of kids, and they need someplace to go. So, please, add that to the agenda. Oh, and one more point. Very happy about the moratorium tonight. I think that the way that the board is now working is really pleasing, because I never used to come to these meetings in person, I used to watch them on YouTube and be disappointed by the behavior I saw, but now that I see everyone working together collaboratively, it's impressive, and I hope it keeps going. Thank you.
Thank you.
Maya Allen, District Three. I too was coming about the Westside Community, um, Youth Center, to see if we cannot get that put back on the agenda. For the last month, all we've heard about is Spring Hill, and how wonderful it is, and the people enjoy it, and you're so proud of your accomplishments. We would like to be proud of the accomplishments in District Three. So, please, put that back on the agenda. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Joseph Reed, uh, you know, I just wanted to say, I, uh, you know, I've grown up in this town, you know, I've been, I've been had a business a long time in this town, you know? And, uh, you know, when those grants went through, uh, you know, I, I, I did all the paperwork, and I, you know, and I had a successful business, and I hadn't did any criminal activity in this town. And, uh, you know, I just kind of feel some kind of way, because I didn't get a dime out of the grant or nothing, but now we sitting here talking about, you know, uh, you know, giving somebody some money that's, you know, you know, might be involved in criminal activity, and, you know, I feel like I didn't do nothing, I didn't get nothing, you know? And I was kind of hungry too, you know what I mean? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone, I'm Hayden Singleton, uh, District Three. I just wanted to say that I understand that everyone's gonna make the decisions that they're gonna make and whatnot, um, and I saw what was going on with the resurfacing of the roads and the budget and everything. I've been here a very, 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 very long time, majority of my life, and I just want to say that when, when it comes to the youth as well, I understand that there's a conversation about the park and everything else. I also believe that if you're gonna be doing any, I see the construction that's going on, sidewalks are very important. So, when it comes to the communities and the families that are in, I live right there, and I see that a lot of the people who try to walk in that area, there's no sidewalks available all through, all completely down Kirkland Road. So, if you're gonna do any, anything, I would just say, sidewalks will go a very, very long way, thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Susan Jackson again, one ten, Wisteria Boulevard, used to be District Three, now District Two. Okay, everybody say walkable, bikeable neighborhoods, walkable, bikeable neighborhoods, walkable, bikeable neighborhoods. I want to ask that you put on the agenda, Westside Park, and sidewalks, walkable, bikeable neighborhoods. I made a call to Chester Clegg regarding the hot mess of the roundabout that they had on, uh, whatever that is, Kirkland. I advised him that I would like a sidewalk from, uh, Kirkland all the way to Newton County High School, and a sidewalk on, uh, from Newton, which is, this is Board of Education. Uh, I'm saying all that to say, our conversation, um, I, he felt indifferent, um, I didn't get any resolution. I honestly believe that whole department needs an audit, okay? It needs an audit. There's no way that roundabout should have taken that long and been such a hot mess. I also want to address the YouTube that we see, uh, from Newton County, I've asked for it to be time stamped with the agenda items, so citizens do not have to look, look at the whole, um, meeting to get the part of the agenda that they need. I'll, also, our website is a hot mess. It looks like my, um, I guess, a sixth grader did it, um, as a project, okay? Also, I want to address the, um, Brown Bridge Road in Salem, that corner is my baby. That CVS, that Walgreens, that Chick-fil-A, Zaxby's, Goodyear, and Walmart. I've been preaching to them about cutting that grass and keeping those curbs clean. I play, I tagged you in a Facebook, I have yet to get a response, I have called Walmart, and so on. It is imperative that our big businesses that we, that, uh, are in our county, take care of their property, be, uh, and because what that does is it brings down our property value, okay? And I have to tell my, whoever's visiting my house, listen, come down to Brown Bridge, go to that raggedy behind Walgreens, okay? You're gonna pass a raggedy behind Walmart, and then keep on going down, and you see me, okay? I don't want to say that any longer. The district managers get tired of me calling. I believe as an elected official, this is your district, don't you drive past there? Did you not see Walmart, that grass?
Ma'am, address me.
Okay. Mason, did you, do you walk, drive by that Walmart?
Yes, ma'am, I do.
Okay, I would ask for you to call them. Use your influence, okay? Use your influence for that. Also, one other thing, I believe there's an agenda of this board is to wear us out as citizens. I don't have time to come up here and tell you what I need every single time. Do what I elect you to do, so I can do what I need to do. You need more tax revenue, you need more things, let me do that. I should not have to come up here, time and time again, to tell you the same old thing, over and over and over again.
Thank you, ma'am.
My, um, Belcher. Live down the street from Marcelo. I see y'all just having a field day with Marcelo. Y'all having a field day, it's so fun. And then, another thing, Demond, who are you working for? Camilla Harris or us? You are, you've been missed two days. Yeah, two days.
Ma'am, ma'am, please address me.
What, what, why is he working two jobs? Ain't doing nothing for New County, ain't doing nothing for District Two, nothing. And then, I thought y'all have to vote. I thought y'all have to vote on things. How, did y'all vote on putting that skate ramp out there in, uh, Denny Dog's? Because he sure put it out there. But he was complaining about Commissioner Sanders spending money. How much he done spent? He ain't doing nothing. Y'all riling off money, y'all ain't said nothing about the senior citizen. Y'all got so much money, are, are, are the applications y'all took, are y'all gonna go back and redo those houses? Are y'all gonna do that? Because y'all got plenty of money. Y'all got Play-Fond, remember? Y'all got all that, so what you gonna do? We, we, we the citizens. We want to know. We got a right to know. Y'all want to build all these apartments, Salem Road is a hot mess, a hot mess, and I stay off Smithso Road. Yes, I do. It's a hot mess. Y'all talking about a full line, it ain't gonna be no full line. Y'all not gonna take those people property. Y'all not gonna take those people property. That's what you gonna do. Roll your eyes, I do it too. You're very disrespectful. And like we said, y'all need to get a new chairman, and we need to know how our money is spent, not no defense lawyer. When I was a, when I was convicted a felon, then nobody up here give me no money. Nobody, so what you gonna spend our taxpayer money? Anybody believe he guilty, he ain't guilty? Let them write their check to them. But our money, we writing to the county, where we been doing it. No, he don't need our money, he stolen us. Let, let, uh, let her be her, his, his defense attorney. Stephanie, that's who, they collaborate together, work together. Ain't that how it go? Mason, you need to get on your job, boo-boo. Oh, you lacking?
Thank you. I think. Anybody else?
Good evening, Board. Commissioner, I'm a US and United States Marine Corps veteran. My name is J.L. Skelton, I stay in the Broad, Broadleaf Subdivision, District Three.
What was your name again?
J.L. Skelton. Uh, my point is to say this, I've been in several of the meetings, and I've been hearing all the things that been being built. I hope we are watching the builders as well as the inspectors, because I come from Michigan, and I done seen them shotgun townhouses, and they're not worth a darn when they built, because they don't have no firewalls. And I hope we're checking that, because I don't want none of y'all conscience to be hurt if something break out in these new developments and a fire, and we lose people and kids. That's an important thing to me. I was an engineer in the Marine Corps, so I know about building. And everyone I'm looking at, I don't see no firewall, no center blocks, the, the, uh, drywall is cheap, it's not worth, it'd burn up in a second. So, these are some of the things that I've been listening to, and I think that's something that we need to start investigating and being more secure about what we're building in Newton County. Because what we're building in Newton County is just fire blocks. One go up, twenty go down. And we need to really look into that. Whoever the inspectors are, they need to be on their J O B. Thank you for canceling that money for Marcelo's bond, because we don't need to pay for it. And in the Marine Corps, once you found guilty or found not guilty or under investigation, all pays stop, everything ranks is gone, you get stripped of everything. And I think that's what, I'm glad y'all deciding to do that. Please strip him of everything. And if you need to investigate him and file charges for Newton County against him, I think that need to take place next, after the federal government get with, do with him. I done seen a lot of corruption in Michigan, and I don't want to see that since I moved here in Newton County twenty-some years ago. I seen the corruptions. We put him in, did he went to Texas? He in Texas right now, a corrupt mayor. I don't need to see no corrupt commissioners. So, let's get that out the way. And as an attorney, I heard what you said, the choices, shouldn't be no choices. No more seating for Marcelo's bonds, no more money, no more accolades, no more nothing, period. And I thank you for doing that today, because I didn't want to hear it or read about it or see it no more. I don't want to tell my veteran friends that live outside of here about the, I want to tell them about the good things about Newton. And I know about a shotgun house, and these, these townhouses are shotguns, ready to burn and kindle, that's all they're gonna do. So, I hope we get some better inspectors going up in them, because if you can hear somebody next door, don't nobody want to hear the arguments going on next door, and that's what's being built. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, well, I'm back, and I want to address Mr. Cowan and Mr. Edwards and Mr. Mason, about Mr. Baines. You know, we don't care about what you do in your personal life, that's your business. But don't bring your personal life and put it on the taxpayer, okay? Don't bring, whatever you doing out there criminal, don't bring it back to us, because we do not want to pay for your mistakes out there. Now, if you want to do whatever and hire whoever, that's your business, because if you going to take our tax dollars and give it to Mr. Baines, well, we got New County Jail over there, everybody over there begging for some help over there, so you gonna take our tax dollars and go over there and help them too? That's the same thing what you trying to do for Mr. Baines. Do not give him our money. Do not give him our money.
Thank you.
Hello, y'all have seen me several times. I just wanted to say I applaud y'all for denying the payment of, uh,
What, what was his name? I'm sorry, what was his name?
Rebecca Mask.
Sorry.
695 Stonely Drive, Oxford, Georgia. All right, I wanna applaud y'all for your vote and denying that you pay his, uh, his, uh, lawyers or whatnot, the fees. I was wondering though, during all, until he is determined whether he's guilty or not guilty, we pay his salary. Am I correct in that? We're paying his salary that entire time, going on now, throughout until we determine it. Now, if we have, if we have to hire an, another, um, somebody to replace him, then he'll, we'll have to pay his salary as well, right? So we'll be paying two salaries while he's being decided whether he's innocent or guilty. So I agree, deny. Thank y'all so much for doing that because my tax dollars, you know, my property taxes, my everything has gone up. And I just appreciate it and I applaud y'all for that. And I hope I have seen a difference from the time I've been coming to these meetings since about March. And I am really happy with what I'm seeing up here now. Y'all are really working together now. And I thank y'all for that very much.
Please.
Denise Williams, a Newton County resident. Um, I sent a, uh, email to the board with my issues and concerns. But it was one thing that I did not get answered. Um, I noticed that you all took him off the IDA to JDA and the silent ways and all those boards. But I want to know, how long is he gonna continue to do business upon the vending contract with Newton County? With the, um, silent ways authority and hauling for the county? When would those contracts be removed as well? Because he should have never, ever been doing business with the county sent as a sitting chair. So I guess this is legal and if I need to do an open record request, I will. But I want confirmation that he is not doing any type of business with Newton County in no capacity.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, Commissioner Cowan. We're gonna start with you.
Thank you, um, Mr. Vice Chairman. Uh, I don't have any comments.
Uh, Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. You know, I, I've been on this board for years and seem like, and my wife often tell me, she, J.C. said, "Why you, you fighting just about every other night, uh, a, a month? Every first and third, uh, Tuesday, trying to fight for the rights of the, of your citizens?" And seem like it's kinda just drag you. And I said, "Well, that's something I asked for." And what we're fighting for now is, is just for the simple right for our children to have somewhere to play. You know, you build a building and it's vacant. And yet it's vacant because they came up and said, "Well, you know, you leased out the building." And yet, that's what the county does to building, lease them out. So you make rules and you change them. And, and so, but I'm hoping that Commissioner Cowan and myself and Commissioner Sanders and, and Stan and Demar, hope we get together and own back up Nelson Heights and put down the, the recreation. I don't wanna go back over it because it's just too much of a distraction from other things that happen in the county. And can you think of how many people who may want to have leased a building, who can't lease it? How many, um, members in the community who have passed and can't have a repass in their own community? And then the crimes that they are committing out in the, in the, in the field now. I don't know where some of these people come from, but we believe in, when you're not using it, close it up, lock it up, take care of it. But unfortunately, you know, we don't come from the same, maybe same community that I came from. And I was born and raised here in Newton County. Transparency. We got to just stop talking about transparency and be transparent. We're not transparent. We got to be transparent. Don't just pay a half a million dollars for the training everybody to be transparent like we did with Dave, them came down here and then when it comes, come to it, we're not transparent. I'm trying to, but I just can't get no help. If I could get a little help, we'll make it transparent. And we're tired of these taxes. Thank you. Give me a few extra minutes. We're tired of all these taxes. I mean, I'm tired of double taxing the city of Cleveland. I'm tired of it. There's no reason why we should continue to be taxed. We got money. You saw that this evening. So hey, it's time for a change, y'all. Only you can make that change and we better start now. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Sanders.
Just to, I'll sound a little bit on what Commissioner Henderson was stating. Um, I'm thankful and excited to see, uh, Newton County residents coming out and speaking out. This is your government. We just sit in these seats because you put us here. We don't own and operate, we don't even own the public records. They're your records, they're the public records. So I wanna thank you from the bottom of my heart, from opening up your heart to speak. And don't be afraid to speak about something that you see that's not right in your community. You have that right to do so, so thank you for that. Um, I just came back from Milwaukee, Wisconsin, which was great. I was invited from Local Progress to attend a progressive governance academy with state reps, which was also state rep from, from Georgia. Also state reps from various, uh, other areas and also, uh, other elected officials. And what progressive leaders are, you only can be invited to this conference unless you are a progressive leader. That means that people who actually speak out for the counties or wherever government they're in and don't mind fighting. And back, basically we'll get the backlash and they help us through that, to get through it. And so everybody that was invited to that conference are known as progressive leaders all over the United States, from the local level to the state level. Um, August 24th, I partner with the Department of Community Affairs. It'll be held at the West Side Precinct at 11 o'clock. It is the Georgia Dream Program. Home buyers down pay assistance program that the Department of Community Affairs has in effect. And I partner with them to bring that to Newton because we have too many people here paying $2,000 a month for rent when you could be putting that towards a house. And so my goal is to encourage home ownership. I was encouraged that by my parents, cause I grew up in a home that was purchased. So I'd never thought of renting. I bought my first house at 21 years old. So I never thought in my mind to rent. I always thought home ownership. So I would love to instill that into certain communities, cause a lot of people don't know. They didn't grow up thinking about that they can own a home. So the Department of Community Affairs will be here this Saturday, West Side Precinct at 11 o'clock. And they have money, they have ways that you, that can assist you. There will also be, um, the loan offices will be there as well. It's a home buyer and down payment assistance program this Saturday. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sanders. Commissioner, I have nothing. Commissioner Mason?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I wanted to first address the gentleman that talked about the builders. Um, I know that is definitely something that I've personally, um, been working towards in District Two. As a matter of fact, uh, we just had a, I had a meeting last night with, uh, a community or a subdivision in District Two along with the builders. Uh, we wanna make sure that we are holding, uh, the builders accountable that are coming into our community and making sure that they are providing us with quality product. Um, even the gentleman that talked about the sidewalks. Uh, that was one of the main issues that this community had. Uh, this community has homes starting at $400,000. Um, now they're coming in, doing a second phase. Those homes are gonna be anywhere between $700,000 to $800,000, but they don't have any sidewalks. And so we wanna make sure that, you know, if that's something that this community desires, uh, that they actually get that and sidewalks are important. Uh, and I think it's something that's needed all around the county. Uh, not in any just specific area, but I think it's something that, uh, we should definitely, this board, uh, could consider and talk about, uh, more. Uh, the subject matter has been brought up before in the past. Um, uh, but we can definitely revisit that as well. Um, I wanted to address, uh, the skate park and, skate park in District Two. Uh, when that skate park came about, uh, in District Two, uh, it was back in 2020 during COVID and I just so happened to be walking at Denny Dobbs Park. Uh, and as I was walking, I saw some kids in the parking lot that were actually riding on their skateboards in the parking lot. And I've told this story before, but I'll revisit again since it was brought up. And so I went to those, uh, young people and I introduced myself and I said, "My name is Commissioner Mason. You know, I see you all are out here skating, uh, in the parking lot, which really isn't that safe because, you know, you got cars coming in and out. You know, would you all be interested in a skate park?" Because that had been presented to me as an option, uh, by our Parks and Recs Department. They said, "Of course I would, we would love to have one." And so I said, "Well, I have a little bit of money that was set aside, um, from SPOST. And so I, I'm open to, if that's something that you want, then I'm open to doing that." We moved forward, we got that skate park for the kids. If you go out there at any given time, you will see that skate park filled on a daily basis, on a regular basis. Now, am I personally gonna go out there and skate? No, I'm not. But that doesn't mean that I don't provide things for those youth that are gonna go out there and skate. So yes, we did that. Um, also, when it comes to, uh, me not being here, uh, at this particular desk, uh, for those who may or may not know, this is a part-time role. And so it is not enough funds to actually take care of my family. I have a wife and four children. And so I have to go out and run another business or take on another job so that I can generate revenue to take care of my family uh, because the citizens of this community has stated that this is a part-time role with part-time pay. And so I have to supplement my income. And so when you don't see me here, uh, it is not because I'm intentionally not being here. It's because I am somewhere working to provide for my family just like you all are working to provide for yours. So yes, this is a duty that I have and this is a responsibility that I have. And you're gonna see me here, uh, most of the time. But if you ever see me out, you'll know that I'm either away at a conference where I'm trying to get information to help enhance this community or I'm working. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you. Um, I believe we have a need for executive session. For this time, I'll entertain a motion to enter into executive session. We have a motion. I'll second. All in favor? Motion carries. I do not believe we'll have a vote run.